Hello Knoxville, this is the city council meeting for July 23rd. Mayor Kinkannon is obviously not here, she's not feeling well, so I will do the best to move through the city's business. For those that are able, please stand. Councilwoman Singh will lead us in invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Fugit.
Thank you. "Ahistha se, shanti me, aghe." Translation is, "With deep consideration and slowly, let's move forward in peace. Blessed be."
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Fugit?
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley?
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Here.
Councilwoman Parker?
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Here.
Councilwoman Singh?
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Here.
And Councilman Thomas. Eight members present, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The approval of minutes, may I have a motion on the minutes?
Move to approve.
Any discussion about the minutes from our last meeting? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, are there any items to be withdrawn?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Item 12D, 12E, and 12F are to be withdrawn by the applicant.
Thank you. Motion and a second?
No, D, E, and F.
12D, E, and F.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Thomas?
And just a quick comment on that. That had to do with a parcel of land up in Enskip, and I want to commend the applicant, Mr. Steve Goodson, who are talking to the, me and the neighbors about that. That parcel will continue to be under discussion. We're looking for a win-win where it will be beneficial to the developer and also have a good impact on the neighborhood. One of the things that's being discussed, and I'm saying it's just discussed, is possibly obtaining that parcel land and making it part of the Enskip Pool Park. That park is really stressed with a lot of the development and traffic up there, and so this would kind of relieve some of the things going on there. So, anyway, a shout-out to Mr. Goodson, and those conversations will continue. Thank you.
It's good to have that idea discussed in public. Thank you for raising that. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, those items are withdrawn. Are there any items for postponement? Councilwoman Singh?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to postpone 11R till the August 6th meeting.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion about the postponement of item 11R?
I just want to say, the item is a, working on a grant. The city's working on a grant, and I'm just postponing it so that the community members that have been working on the same grant, that they can all sit down together and work together.
Thank you. Councilwoman McKenzie, did you have a comment? Nope. All right, any discussion about that item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. That item's been postponed to August 6th. Are there any items to be requested to be added by motion? If not, we'll move on to the consent item, 5D. Is there any motion on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you. Mayor Kinkannon sends her best to the citizens of Knoxville, and I'm going to read some items from her to pass along. First, I want to start by thanking our summer in the city interns. This is the last week for 21 young men and women who have been working alongside 19 city departments this summer. This Friday, the interns will wrap up their time with the city with a special presentation at the Public Works Building at 2:00 PM. Council, we are all invited to attend and celebrate their accomplishments. I want to give a shout-out to city staff who have put time and energy into these promising young students. Next week, we will come together to celebrate two more dog parks in the city. This celebration will be a bit different, as the celebration will have a pet fair-type of atmosphere. Everyone is invited to attend, and you can bring your dog. The celebration will be next Wednesday at Love Towers on Armstrong Avenue at 3:30. There will be food, a water charlie, a Young Williams Animal Center booth, and more. Last, next Thursday, we're breaking ground on another phase of work at First Creek at Austin. Phase 3 marks the start of work on 161 new housing units, including 50 supportive housing units for low-income seniors. The groundbreaking's August 1st at 11:30. I hope to see you there, and see Mr. Bentley there, who's played an instrumental role in that, that project for our community. Now, rules of decorum, a quick reminder, those who wish to speak either to specific item or during public forum should sign up to the city recorder before 4:00 PM. Please do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific items, please remember to stay on topic. Robert Rules of Order state that remarks must be germane to the question ahead, and that is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please know that you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience. Those who do so may be asked to leave. I appreciate in advance everyone's respect for these rules. That does it for the mayor's report. One more thing to note, council, there are more than three speakers signed up for items 12B and 12C. Our rules allow for three speakers for and against an item, so for those items, for those members signed up, or the public signed up for those items, we encourage you to huddle at the back and maybe consolidate your comments into three speakers. If not, council can choose a different course in the future. Members signed up for item 12B, opposed are Mr. Bentley Marlowe, Emmett Lipshutz, Inzenga Amani, Deidre Harper, Emmanuel Bailey, and Jax Fox. And speakers for 12C are Bentley Marlowe, Rick Roach, Deidre Harper, and Jack Fox, Jax Fox, excuse me. So, if you'd like to huddle in the back and decide which of your three items are, which of three of you would like to speak, I think that would be beneficial for our normal course of rules. That's it for comments about the meeting and the mayor's report. Are there reports of council? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Folks up in Lincoln Park along Chickamauga Avenue recently may have seen a lot of trees planted up there along that stretch, 44 to be exact. That's part of the Knoxville's policy of improving the canopy of trees. No less than five partners, City of Knoxville, Trees Knoxville, KUB, Keep Knoxville Beautiful, and University of Tennessee are all working together to try to improve the canopy over the city. The, is the diversity of trees, there's magnolia, at least two types of maple, two types of oak, and elm trees. All of these are native. There's some non-native trees, but they're not invasive, and they are used to kind of diversify the canopy, but also planted in areas which some of the other trees might not do as well. So, that's a great development up in that part of the woods. And while I'm at it, I just wanted to mention some of the other things that are going on. Some of these are going in some neighborhoods, some of them are going in all neighborhoods, but in that area, we've recently had traffic calming to a good degree. There's a lot of speed bumps, that's been really, really well-received by the neighbors. We have improved bus service, I hope, coming in August with, with the cat, reimagined cat. We now have the option for broadband in that area, and going back a little bit further, the curbside recycling from 2011. So, put all those together, the canopy, the traffic calming, the broadband, improved bus services, and curbside recycling, there's a lot of good stuff going on, we can always do more, but all of these are meant to improve the quality of life in these neighborhoods, and they are all consistent with sustainability.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Any other comments or reports from council? If not, I just have one to add, that I want to wish a proactive Happy Birthday Councilwoman Fugit next week, so we'll all be watching to celebrate with you. All right, moving on in our agenda, Council, or Mr. Johnson, please proceed with item 9A.
9A is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 1805 Farad Hickey Road from RN1 District to RN2 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, Brian Mayo, applicant 3rd District.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilwoman Singh?
I just think we should.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
9B is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 324 Witaga Drive from RN1 District to RN2 District, David Markovich, applicant 4th District.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
9C is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 3107 Landview Drive from RN1 District to RN2 District, Andrew Sakway, applicant 6th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilwoman McKenzie?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to say that I'm going to have to abstain from this vote, because I do have a working relationship with Pastor Sakway.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
9D is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 0 and 1,000 May Avenue, 0 Richards Street, 0 West 5th Avenue, 0 Clark Street, and 0 West 4th Avenue, from IH District to CH1 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, Knox Encore LLC, applicant 6th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? We have a speaker. We have a speaker signed up. This is item 9D. Tina Sparks has signed up in opposition of this. Ms. Sparks, would you make your way to the podium? State your name and address for the record.
So, I spoke to this once before, and I want to speak to it again. I want to make sure that we understand what we're doing here. This is not for the betterment of little brown and little black children from North Knoxville and East Knoxville. It is not. It's a sports bar for friends who have finished doing whatever they're doing over on Central to walk over and say, "Hey, let's go, let's go shoot a few balls and have some beers." It is a sports bar. I'm going to leave that. I want to read something from the Planning Commission. It's on page 454. It's dated June 13th. This person may be here, I don't know, because I don't know them. I'm assuming his first name is Dustin. And he is the current vice president of Old North Knox. I'm assuming that is the neighborhood organization. "I worry the highway commercial is the wrong move. I know it is hard to redevelop industrial sites, and I give kudos to the developers for being creative. The use is not ideal to me, as it is too suburban and car-oriented for our part of town." And I don't know what the, I know what the word suburban means. I'm not stupid, but I don't know what he meant by using that suburban, car-oriented, regardless of its next, and it's next to the interstate. But this is so close to multiple neighborhoods, and in the future, should the golf facility shut down, this rezoning would allow the possibility of something suburban and not, again, there's that word, not compatible with our walkable neighborhoods to be built there. My understanding is, CH requires no adherence to edge conditions or creating an urban environment in the way CG zones do. We should be better connecting, we should be better connecting the neighborhoods to the east and west of 275 with the walkable areas. In my opinion, this zoning does not, does the opposite of that, it makes a hostile area for pedestrians that could be much more charming, charming and friendly to us. Now, I'm all about that. He mentions the Greenway and the creek. I want to mention the creek, too. Y'all know that this used to be a, it's a brownfield. Do we have, have we gotten the report on the result? What's under the ground there? What's going into the water? What's going to be on that, coming up from that Greenway? Children are going to be there. Grown-ups are going to be there. What is under there? The company, it's from Buffalo, they're from Buffalo, Encore, they're the one in Buffalo. Guess where it's built, being built? On the site of a landfill, a recycling center, the same thing. Now, I understand that we have to do something with these areas, but we don't have to do something with these areas that could endanger our children, our health, everybody, whether that's a UT student coming over, somebody finished with the baseball game coming over, somebody coming over from Yee-Haw's on Broadway coming over. I don't care. They got to be safe if they're coming over there. So, we don't know that. I, I can't find anything. I've looked and I've looked. Maybe I'm missing it, I don't know. I don't have any letters behind my name, and as Tommy Smith knows, I'm not standing around waiting for my statue to be erected to me with my finger in the air. I am just me, and I'm asking these questions because they need to be answered. This needs to be a safe place, regardless of whether it's a beer joint or a place for kids to learn manners. That's another story altogether. But it needs to be a safe place. I don't, and I know the Planning Commission is already, what is it, 10 to 0? So, they're all for it. Have we thought this through? Have you guys thought it through? I don't know. I just, I wish you would just really, really think about this some more. I really do. For everybody. For everybody, please. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks.
Thank you.
Counsel, that's it for public speakers. Are there any, is there a motion or any discussion? We already have a motion, thank you. Any discussion on the item? Councilwoman Parker?
Since the environmental issues were raised about this property, could anyone update us on what those plans are for the property?
I'm happy to. Thanks for bringing that topic up. We have been working closely with the property owner as they have acquired this property and done the due diligence to explore what the contaminants in the area are, and there is a brownfield agreement and a opportunity to work with an EPA grant for the cleanup for the site. And I know when I met with the developer, the condition of this site does limit development there. Yes, it does. This site cannot be residential, for example. And I feel like there was even something about the aspect of the, the business that's going in there, in that the, there's so much green space that people will not really be on. Is that also part of it, or no? I'm not sure, I'm not really clear on the distinction you're making there. Yeah. I understand that there is, they're not paving the entire site, but the areas that will be utilized will be, the term is usually capped with asphalt, so it's, it's all part of the soil remediation.
Ms. Parker, I believe the, one of the advantages of this development concept is that a large portion of the unusable site is not going to be accessed by regular patrons, correct? The design of this type of site, it'll be capped, and it won't be, it won't be accessible for part of that, is that correct?
Right. The area that's being developed, that people will be walking on and utilizing, will be part of the building, so it will be capped. The other area that's part of the field, so to speak, where the, the golf balls go, that area is open and is not capped. But soil remediation will still happen as part of the cleanup on the entire site. Okay, thank you. I, I still have some concerns about the rezoning, and look forward to speaking with planning soon about plans for this area. But today, I'm, I'm going to vote against the rezoning. I do expect it to pass, but, but simply to give us pause when thinking about this area, the goals of the neighborhood, the goals we have for areas close into downtown, wanting to make sure it remains walkable. This may be the best improved zoning that this property can get, but I'd like to struggle with it a little bit more and see if new development can come into this area with, with, an even less intense zoning. So, that's my reasoning for voting against it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Helsley?
Oh, sorry, I was just asking about remediation as well. Thanks, Sergeant.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Ms. Justice, you may be the one to answer my question. The, is this lot, I'm trying to find the map in our packet, is this lot a budding or near the new Greenway that got installed? Or it's on the-
On Marion Street? Yes.
Yeah.
The Marion Street extension is adjacent next to this parcel.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilwoman Parker? Okay. Item carries 8 to 1.
9E is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 3407 Valley View Drive from RN1 District to RN4 District, leaving all special purpose, overlay, and previously approved planned districts unchanged, Benchmark Associates Incorporated, applicant 4th District.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
9F is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 277 Ogil Avenue from CG1 District to CG2 District, Franco Irokoze, applicant 1st District.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. I have a question. Is the applicant here? Mr. Franco? No, if not? All right. Well, I'll pass on my comment then. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a new lease agreement with Tennessee Valley Agricultural and Industrial Fair Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any speakers for this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilwoman Fugit?
Thank you. I just had a quick question, I think I know the answer to, but, you know, it says that the lease runs from 2023, which is already started, goes to 2026. I assume this is coming back to us because there's an amendment requiring the sale of property at Midway? I mean, is that why this is before us? Because it should have been renewed or done back in 2023?
Yeah, this is before you, because we've significantly changed the terms of the original agreement, so we sat down with the fair, and by the way, the executive director is here, and longtime board member, one of their attorneys is here, so they've been working with the law department and our team on that. So, it's here really to give assurances to the fair and the city's commitment to the fair, which is, as everyone knows, has been around over 100 years in East Knoxville, but to also allow for the redevelopment of areas adjacent to Chaiway Park and the Magnolia Corridor. There's a lot of activity happening in those areas. So, this is to allow those to happen, but the fair has assurances for the 24, the 25, and the 26 fair, so that they can be successful, but we can allow changes in redevelopment and new investment.
Thank you. I plan to support it, I just think that need to be said out loud.
Thank you.
Because those of us that know, know, but otherwise, it looks like we're approving something after the facts.
Yeah, thank you.
I believe you mentioned the director and board members are here. Would you stand or raise your hand to be recognized? Thank you for your role in the community and how hard you've worked with the city to make these next few years possible. Appreciate it. Councilwoman Parker?
If, if you don't mind, I would love to hear from the director just shortly about upcoming plans for the fair. It looks like this lease agreement ensures we will have a fair through 2026.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, that's my understanding. As far as the fair this year-
Sorry, sir. Just real fast, could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Scott Zumpke, Executive Director, Tennessee Valley Fair, 7920 Oak Ridge Highway, Knoxville, Tennessee.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, go ahead, finish your statement.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Do, do you all have any plans beyond 2026?
I mean, we'd love to be able to stay there in East Knoxville. We've been a cornerstone in, in the area. You know, the lease, as you see it right there, beyond the 26 fair gets a little bit complicated for us. We're only given six months to be able to plan a fair, which really is not doable, so we hopefully to be able to get a little bit more time. You know, we were presented the lease from, from the city, and it was pretty much, here's the lease, take it or there's, there's no more fair. So, you know, we, we understand, East Magnolia is a growing and developing area, and we want to be part of that, but that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you. I appreciate that update. I know that there are a lot of folks in our community who really value the fair, have valued it their entire lives, and are very interested to stay informed on, on the future of the fair here in our city. So, thank you for keeping us informed.
And I think, you know, we, we do a lot, you know, our, we did an economic impact study back in 2018 that showed the fair generated over $10 million for Knoxville and Knoxville County, and there's a lot of local folks that get some seasonal money by being employed during the fair, and there's a whole lot of neighbors that sell parking spots out in front of their houses to be able to make some extra money. So, we feel like we're a very valuable part of Knoxville, have been since we started, and hopefully we can get some things resolved, so 27 and beyond can be a little bit more favorable to us, so we can plan to have, have a great fair.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sorry, one more question. I'm curious, I'm interested in the economic report. Would you be willing to send that to council?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Parker, anything else to add? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
11B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Knox County in order for Knoxville-Knox County Emergency Management Agency to accept $25,300 as a subprecipient of a Homeland Security Grant for equipment and software at the mobile command post and the emergency operations center.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to accept a policy with Liberty Mutual for property flood, earthquake, and boiler and machinery insurance coverage for the city of Knoxville for an approximate annual premium of $692,569, with the option to renew the policy for two additional one-year terms.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Design and Construction Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $378,350 for the Cal Johnson Recreation Center Improvements Project.
Second.
Motion made in a second. Any discussion?
Uh, just, um, yes, sorry.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Just diving right in. I'm not sure who wants to answer my question. I'm just curious for the public record what all improvements are going to be made to Cal Johnson under this agenda item.
I believe most of these improvements are primarily related to ADA improvements access.
Like doors and parking lots?
Ramp, I think a lot of the work is ramp related. Oh, Chris. Like Chris.
Be happy to answer that. It's basically adding a sidewalk that goes from the building and the parking area down to the playground and the park, the basketball courts that are around. And it also adds a side or a staircase that also gets you down to where the basketball courts are located.
Okay, to make them all more accessible.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, I can vouch that that access to the basketball court is needed. You know, you've got that slope down there and that's about the only way you can get down there. And just for the public, that's a great basketball court down there for an outside court. It's one of the best ones I've ever seen. It seems to be underutilized. So just FYI for people who want to shoot some baskets and play outside, that's a really good court. Thank you.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Thank you. So just for the record, it's been like that for eons and we've had to go down that hill. And actually those were tennis courts at one point before they, they were turned into basketball courts. So we actually had Candace Parker here a couple of years ago. This was one of the, gosh, what was it called? It's, it was from a gaming system. They were doing these, these, these different parks in different. Exactly, yep. And so a lot of folks from the community came down and helped, helped paint it. Candace Parker was actually out here a couple of years ago. So beautiful, beautiful facility. Love that we've, we are investing some, some more dollars into those renovations, but especially for the access to, to those basketball courts.
Previous courts in town.
Yeah. And as it is, I almost give as much of a workout getting up and down that hill as I do when I get to the court. But thanks a lot. That's really needed. Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Eleven E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Design and Construction Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $89,692 for the downtown bollard installation project.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? I will just say on behalf of Mayor Kinkanen, I know she is an advocate for these bollards and the safety they provide pedestrians. So if you're watching at home, mayor, this one's for you. Councilwoman Parker.
Could someone help us understand how these will function and operate? Is it a KPD question or engineering?
They basically are a hole that is dug in the ground and these bollards are installed in that, in that hole. And then it'll be evened up with the, with the surrounding ground. And it'll have a handle and a key on it.
Yeah.
And so we'll be able to have folks come out, unlock it. They'll be able to raise the bollard up and lock them in place. And they'll basically be 17 of them oriented around the market square area. If you come down for a farmer's market, it's basically similar to the way it's blocked off for those types of events.
Okay, okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the big difference too is that we don't have to bring employees out with trailers and equipment every single time we want to do an event. So it's operationalizing the ability to open streets up for pedestrians in a way that is, you know, less labor. So there's an initial investment, but there's actually some reduction in long-term operational costs.
Well, and also when I imagined it, I didn't imagine it being hidden until in use. And that was one of my concerns, was that we would have all of these ready-to-go barriers. You push a button and it swings out and blocks the road. But okay, I get what these are now. Thank you.
My only concern is that they're going to be very popular and be ready for requests from other walkable surrounding areas to the downtown.
You can send all those to Grant Rosenberg.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'd like to put in that request.
See? It's contagious. Watch out. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Design and Construction Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $4,596,641.38 for the Knoxville Urban Wilderness Gateway Park James White Pavilion Project.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? I have one. Just, RJ, if you wouldn't mind giving an update on the phases of this project. This has been a long project in a good way. It's sustained investment, but I think this is the last of this big project in terms of phase, which you talk a little bit about.
I'm going to ask Wes Sword to join us at the podium. He's been directing this project. So, thank you.
Thanks. Wes Sword, 400 Main Street. So this is the final phase of this project. It started, how many years ago now? About six years ago, I think, in the planning. This will finish that project out. There's a sister pavilion at Bookends Gateway Park that we just opened at Baker Creek earlier this year, and this will kind of complete that work.
Okay. Thank you. Those are the best bathrooms in all the city.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Helsley, anything to add?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Johnson, Mermian, and Thompson Incorporated to provide construction administration services for the Urban Wilderness Gateway Project, increasing the contract amount by $83,581.75 for a new contract total of $315,701.75 and extending the date of completion to June 30, 2025.
Move to approve.
You have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with GCE Construction in an amount not to exceed $910,105 for the renovations to the sixth floor of the city county building.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Knox County to accept $20,300 in grant funds as a subrecipient of the 2024 Homeland Security Grant in order to purchase equipment and supplies to identify radioactive sources for the fire department's hazardous materials unit.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Councilmember Roberto.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Chief Sharp, I just wanted to give a thank you for the hazardous materials unit cleanup that we just recently saw in Kingston Pike. And I appreciate you getting additional supplies and equipment. And I hope you never have to use any of the ones that you're using to identify radioactive sources. But I'm glad that we have your team available for us to help us when these kinds of spills happen and protect the public. So thank you very much.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven J. Eleven J is a resolution approving the Western Heights Redevelopment and Urban Renewal Plan prepared by Knoxville's Community Development Corporation.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with DH Griffin Wrecking Company Incorporated for the demolition of a vacant, blighted structure and salvage of historical contributing characteristics at 2100 Washington Avenue in an amount not to exceed $41,235.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Salvation Army Knoxville Area Command to provide an amount not to exceed $86,245 in homeless general funds to provide emergency shelter services through the Joy Baker Center at Minns Emergency Shelter.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a sub-grantee agreement with East Tennessee Community Design Center to provide an amount not to exceed $27,609 in community development block grant funding for conceptual design and technical assistance for approximately eight community improvement projects.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? I saw former councilman, Mr. Greve, is he still in the house? Thank you for being here. Thank you for your role in the community and what these projects will do. It's the last mile for, or sometimes the first mile for nonprofits particularly who need help with design services. So thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to accept a grant from the Tennessee, excuse me, the Department of Homeland Security as a subrecipient of the state of Tennessee in the amount of $50,000 pursuant to the 2022 state and local cybersecurity grant program to pay for multi-factor authentication software, which will protect the city's network from unauthorized access.
You have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept a grant award of $350,000 with no required local match from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services to be used to enhance de-escalation and crisis response training for the Knoxville Police Department officers.
Council, we have one member, person signed up for a public comment. Ms. Tina Sparks.
Tina Sparks, 37917. Chief Noel. I know that y'all have not applied for this grant before. I know this is a different grant. But you have applied and gotten other grants. When I was reading over this, when I was reading, I wanted to make sure that I understood the word enhance. So I went to my Oxford Dictionary. And it does say intensify, increase, or further improve the quality, value, or extent of. You can't really enhance something that you don't have in the first place, that you haven't done in the first place. Chief, listen, I've been talking to police chiefs. I've, I've spoken to you. I spoke a lot to our former chief. I spoke to Chief Roush. I've been speaking to you on this very topic all these years. Three police chiefs, two mayors, and we still cannot get this right, no matter how much money we get, whether it's matched in local funds or not. I did sign up to speak in favor of this, and I do. If you would take this money and do with it what you're supposed to do. Get your guys in there, get them trained so that they don't lose their heads or go out, go off and say, I can handle this on my own. I don't need to call in a, a co-responder team. Maybe, maybe this time next year, call in a, a person from heart, an alternative response. To qualify for this, I, 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 I've got something else here I want to read. I'm not too good with this, so, okay. Safer outcomes. Okay. Wait a minute. First of all, this comes from, this money comes from COPS, Community Oriented Policing Services. That's an organization that the money flows through. 1994, President Clinton, we all know about the violent crimes law, all that. We all know that. It's, but it was specifically built, it was specifically set up to build trust and mutual respect. You have to earn both of those things. I know some KPD officers, I know some, and they have earned respect and they have earned trust, me and others in the community, that I know of. But when little boys are killed in bathrooms, say his name. And when old ladies like me get thrown out of a hospital and are begging for help and they're left to die so shamefully, say her name. Please. I want y'all to take this money and do the right thing with it. Get your guys to do, to, to, to do the right thing. These people should not be dead. That homeless person up in Milwaukee should not be dead. Because y'all went up there for training. What did y'all learn up there? Y'all could have been spending that time training here rather than going up to Milwaukee for that farce. I am so frustrated with you guys. I want, I, when I was a little girl, and that was a long time ago, chief. That was a long time ago. I respected, my mom and daddy taught me to, if you're in trouble, you go find somebody wearing a badge. If you get lost, you go find somebody wearing a badge. They taught me that. I taught my kid that. I used to teach my kids at facts in school that. There are certain criteria, and I don't think y'all have, I don't think y'all have this criteria. You're supposed to be able to work with people that are disabled, that are in crisis. You're supposed to be able to do that to, to earn this money, and I don't think y'all can do that.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks.
Please do your job.
Council, that's the only speaker for this item. Any discussion or questions? I'll have one for Chief Noel. Chief, would you explain to the public what these funds will be used for and how the department plans to maximize those?
Sure. We plan to enhance our existing de-escalation training by bringing in outside speakers to speak to our officers. We also just took delivery on a Vertura firearm simulator. This money will allow us to create different scenarios where officers will be placed in shoot, don't shoot scenarios where they also have to verbally de-escalate and interact with the system. And we're going to use this money to help continue to create more and more complex scenarios to help train our officers.
Thank you. Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have concerns about those simulations. Because I've participated in them multiple times now. I think that there can be a value, but it just depends on how you're using it. The last one I used was to train an officer on how to properly use their stun guns, whatever you call those things. And in that situation, we want police to take the least lethal option available for them to be able to resolve whatever issue they're working on in that moment. And so that simulation, I see value there because it's training officers to go for that stun gun rather than their handgun first. What type of simulation would be purchased through this grant money?
So we already have a simulator that allows officers to simulate using all of the tools in their two-belt, including, including their taser, but it starts off with verbal commands. So I think that the one you used was when taser was here with their roadshow, I guess, when they were trying to, you know, to sell tasers. This would be a scenario where the This would be a scenario where the officers would have to make the appropriate decisions using all of the tools on their gun belt, from their firearm all the way down to the verbal commands.
Gotcha. The, the other simulator that I experienced was through, uh, in KPD's training room. And my experience was, with that was, it makes you feel as if you have to be ready to use your gun in all situations. I don't know if this is going to be a different simulator than the one that I used, but the one that I used, it was scenario after scenario that made you think every other detail I've assessed in this situation is wrong. And I should always assume this person could, could, could present the, the highest threat to me possible. And that, to me, does not leave room for them to analyze and to consider other options other than lethal force as soon as they question what is happening.
I mean, we, we train our officers to respond to the incident, always evaluate the information that they're rece, that, that, that's in front of them, and respond with the appropriate level of force. So with, with this de-escalation training, we're, we're training officers to go in and respond with, with the level of, you know, with, with the level of resistance that they're facing. That could start with verbal commands, that could be deadly force, could be tasers, could be pepper spray. It's different scenarios that could cause a wide variety of different responses.
I'm not going to be able to support this today, and, and what I want to do is, share the research that I've found on these simulators and, and hope that you will take it into consideration.
And this is not to buy a simulator. This is, we already have a simulator we just bought. This is to help create new scenarios to use with that simulator.
So it's like software for the simulator?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's helpful. I'll send that information over and would really appreciate if you could check it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Parker. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, eight to one.
11P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Knox County to accept $32,500 as a sub-recipient of the 2024 Homeland Security Grant in order to purchase a mobile cam, camera trailer for use by the Knoxville Police Department.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate a trade of certain Knoxville Police Department handguns and firearms for new professional handguns and a payment of $280 with accurate tactical, accurate law enforcement.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11S is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for, and if awarded, accept a clean, heavy-duty vehicles grant from the Environmental Protection Agency in an amount of up to $325,000, with a city match of up to $175,000 to replace a city diesel, heavy-duty vehicle with an electric or clean-fueled, heavy-duty vehicle.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12A is an ordinance of the Council of the City of Knoxville to amend the Charter of the City of Knoxville, specifically Chapter 412 of the Private Acts of 1923 of the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, entitled, "An Act to Incorporate the City of Knoxville and Knox County, Tennessee, and Define the Rights, Powers, and Liabilities of the Same, to Fix the Boundaries of Said Municipality and Repeal All Acts or Parts of Acts in Conflict with this Act, and All Acts Amendatory Thereto, by Amending Article 4, Section 404, so as to Align the Fifth Council District with the Other District Council Elections, and Further Providing for the Submission of this Ordinance to the Qualified Voters of the City of Knoxville for Approval as Provided in Article 11, Section 9 of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee."
Council members, we have two speakers signed up for this item, one in favor and one opposed. Up first for item 12A in favor of the ordinance is Jax Fox. Jax, if you could come forward, please. Jax Fox. Okay, seeing her not here is. One speaker in opposition to this, Mr. Bentley Marlowe. Mr. Marlowe, if you would step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Bentley Marlowe, 322 Douglas 7837921. I'm not in District 5. My issue with this primarily is one that, uh, having followed every rule that has been passed by council to make amendments to the zoning ordinance, and going above and beyond, because if you recall, I started at Planning, and then they sidestepped it, so I appealed it to here. And then you guys, at my request, threw it back to Planning, where it had yet another meeting, uh, and then left there and came here for a second hearing. It had four meetings, four public meetings. Each time at council, or at Planning, it had at least three weeks of public comments gathered online. And then it came back to, um, City Council for the second time. So four meetings where people from the public could sign up and speak. And people did sign up and speak at all four meetings. And public comments were made every week that it was allowed at, um, Planning on their website. Yet, I was heard repeatedly that there was not enough public input and public process. That was four public meetings. Four opportunities for people to sign up and speak. Four-plus weeks of online comments. That, if that's not enough public process and public input to make a zoning ordinance change, then I dare say that a single workshop, in which I attempted to sign up to speak and was told that there would be no public comment at that workshop, and then tonight, where it appears that there's going to be no movement to waive your own rules to allow members have signed up to speak on these amendments. It appears to me that we don't really value public process or public input when the establishment, or the mayor, or the administration, or Mr. Roberto in West Knoxville wants to make a change. And I think that's what's at the heart of all of this, is that the function of, of these proposals should require some robust discussion because they are, in essence, changing the very foundational documents that control and govern our city. It's like making willy-nilly changes to the Constitution of the United States. The second issue I have with this is that if we were to move the 5th District, and I understand they feel lonely, but if we were to move it, we would have six seats, a majority, a supermajority, if you will, of council that could change at any single election. It destroys the continuity and the predictability from the business community that our regulations and our, and our regulations would have any consistency. Because depending on the weather of whatever political movement is afloat and popular that particular election cycle, you could potentially upend the majority of council. I would like to see more discussion, and I have a proposal. I think that we should go to an at-large, uh, the three at-larges to serve six-year terms, so that they have more of an invested stake and can see through the whatever whim is popular this particular election cycle. And by doing so, then you could structure so that three seats, three of the district seats could be on the ballot with one at-large. And then in the, the second cycle, you would have three at-larges and one of the six-year at-larges, three districts with one of the at-larges, and then you would just be rotating. So at no point in time would you have more than four ever be chan, possible to change on council, which would provide more predictability and stability to predict the future of regulations and, and policies for the business community and citizens at large. But at, at the end of the day, I believe, truly believe, and it was used against me. And remind you, I had four public meetings, that each meeting allowed discussion, and in many of those discussions, I recall, the rules were waived to allow more than three people to speak. I urge that the same should be, that should be the standard when discussing matters as, as pertinent as a city charger change. That is my only opposition to this. We need more process, we need more discussion, and I would oppose putting more than the, the current setup of voting five all at once, but allowing six all at once just makes it too unpredictable because we could totally change the majority of council, a supermajority of council could potentially be changed overnight. And what kind of wreck and havoc would that cause to policies and procedures? Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. That concludes, uh, members of the public who have signed up for this item. Uh, council members, um, for this item and the subsequent items, uh, council members Thomas, Roberto, and Parko, or Parker, excuse me, are sponsors of those items. So as a result, you'll get eight minutes to make introductory remarks if you'd like to. So, uh, Councilmember Thomas, you want that privilege? You're, you're welcome to it.
Yes, I will be somewhat brief. Actually, this is an issue that all my council members, I'm sure, are well aware of. Over the years, we've had a workshop. It's also been discussed a lot out in the community in the 5th District for years. The situation right now in the 5th District is because the 5th District is not in with the other districts, and it's in the cycle with all the at-large seats. Right now, any person in the 5th District can only run for city council once every four years. That's been going on for a long time. If you live in any other district in the city, you will have the opportunity to run for your district seat, or in two years, you would have an opportunity to run for an at-large seat. So you would have an opportunity, have an opportunity in any district besides the 5th District right now to seek a city council seat every two years. That's the way it is now. With the current plan of the Tennessee Legislature, not only would people not have the opportunity to run for our city office, city council seat every four years, they wouldn't even be able to vote for any city council seat for four years. So it's, it's completely unjust. And so, you know, all we're asking for simply is that the 5th District just be treated like every other district. So, um, and also, it's been so confusing over the years to run in the 5th District and have to explain, well, you can vote for this seat then and seat for that. And, um, it's, we've just been this outlier, and I think that some of that has accounted for somewhat less political activity in the 5th District than some of the other districts. So anyway, I obviously am going to, um, make the motion to approve this, and I support it. And I also, at the proper time, will have a, an amendment on, just a tweaking on some of the language that, uh, Mr. Swanson and I have talked about, just to make, uh, some clarity on one of the sentences. That's all.
Counsel, there's a motion. We need a second, if it's okay. Thank you, before we continue discussion. Uh, next up, Councilmember Roberto. Excuse me, Councilwoman Ryder was first.
Oh, okay. Councilwoman Thomas, I just want to have you reiterate something for clarity for everyone that I think I just heard you say. So if I were to run for a district seat, 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and I lost, in two years, I could run for an at-large seat. But I could never run for the 5th District and an at-large. So the 5th District can, somebody could run for the at-large seats, but they couldn't run for the 5th District because you guys are on the same cycle.
Right.
Because the way our elections are set up, you can't run for two at once.
Well, I'm not sure I'm following you, actually.
But if I lost in 1, 2, 3, 4, or 6, I could then come back in two years and run for an at-large.
Right.
But if I lost in the 5th, I'd have to wait four years to run again.
You're exactly right.
Because you're off-cycle with the rest of us.
You're exactly right. Because the 5th District is in the same cycle with all the at-large seats, the opportunity to run for city council, if you're in the 5th District, is just that one cycle that comes around every four years. If you're in any other district besides the 5th, you have a chance to run for your district seat, and then in two years, whether you lost or not, you would have a, a chance to run at an at-large seat. Or even if you didn't run in the district seat that time, in two years, you would have an opportunity to run. So there would be an opportunity, uh, to run for city council every two years in every other district, except the 5th.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification. In regards to the concern about how long this has been discussed publicly, or any of the other things, when was the workshop that we had? I think Councilwoman Roberto might be able to tell me, or somebody else, or, um, Mr. Johnson. When was the workshop we had about, there was the workshop last week, there was a previous workshop. When was that?
Uh, the last workshop on this topic was in November of '23.
Okay, so, okay, so not quite a year ago. Okay. And any decisions that we make tonight, voting up or down any of these charter amendments, we are not making the changes to the charter. It actually goes out for the ultimate public discussion, which is the voters get to vote on it. Is that correct, Mr. Frost? All right, so everyone has the chance to vote on it. It's not a representative vote.
Yeah, just to underline your point, what we decide here, we'll just put it on the, the ballot for the people to decide. So, and, um, so we're not the final say on it. It'll have to go up to the public to see if they approve it or not.
Councilmember Roberto.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. What, uh, Councilmember Ryder just said is, is exactly right, and it goes to the point of, why the zoning discussion that we had just a minute ago is not the same as the charter amendment. Because at the zoning, that's the final decision. The final decision that we're talking about tonight, for all of these, is the voters of the city in a referendum. So, um, there will be, this, all that these charter amendments are doing is giving the voters the choice to make decisions. We're just putting it on the ballot for them to be able to make a decision. They're the final arbiters. They're the final ones to make the decision. And the changes that Councilmember Thomas just talked about, and, and the reason I'm supporting this, and what he's doing, is because the changes to the elections have already happened. So what you're used to for the last 55 years isn't going to be going on anymore. What he's providing you is, in conjunction with 12B, because that's intended to give you a choice, where you can make a choice to choose a district-only process or make a choice to do a hybrid-at-large process. Council is not making that decision, merely putting it on the ballot for you, the voters, to make the decision. And I support this because if we did elect and choose to have a, a district-only process, then the 5th District will be, uh, treated very unfairly. And they would only get a chance to vote, you know, uh, in city elections once every four years, where every other district in 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 will be able to vote every two years, because we get to vote in our district race, and then we get to vote in our, uh, in the at-large races two years later. And I don't think that's fair. We shouldn't be treating people differently. So since the system has changed, and since we are hopefully going to be able to give the voters an option to choose what they want, then, um, I think we have to make this change to make sure it's fair to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Roberto. I just want to note before I go to Councilwoman Fugit, Stephanie O'Hara is here. Ms. O'Hara works for MTAS. She, everybody on council is familiar with MTAS's role, but you've done a lot of research on this and on the, uh, other items before us tonight, so just for council. She's here. She wasn't able to make it to the workshop, but they provided a lot of research for Mr. Frost and other council members. So, maybe there were questions for MTAS. Ms. O'Hara is here. Councilwoman Fugit.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to clarify. I think it's been talked about, but to be clear, people from the 5th District currently, two people could be running at the same time. One for the 5th District seat and one for an at-large seat. I, I, I do get the point that it's only every four years, but I don't want people to think that means nobody from the 5th District could ever be running for an at-large seat currently, because they could, at the same time, somebody's running for the district seat. It would be confusing for the 5th District, but just want to make that clear. Now, I will also say, because I, my call- Now, I will also say, because my colleagues, this will not come as a surprise, I have been saying for a long time, I think that our city should seriously consider a formal charter review process that makes it where every certain number of years, we really do look at the charter and aren't always reacting. I mean, we are where we are now because the speed with which we're starting to talk about this less than a year ago is because the state law changed, which changed the way our elections started. But it is like every organization, I run a nonprofit, we look at our bylaws every few years, things change. We talked about it in our city council workshop. I think that would be something for us to continue to look at, separate and apart from this, because there are opportunities for us to take a look at how the world has changed and if there are things that we want to look at that are less in the heat of the moment, if you will. And I think that's a good thing. That doesn't negate the urgency of this discussion, because absent doing anything, our election rules and the way we as a city chose to vote in the 1960s will not be available to us, period. We can't do district races in a primary and then city at-large. That's gone to us. So I'm sorry I editorialized about that, but I really, I mean, it is why we are having this discussion, because to Mr. Marlowe's point, and I think a lot of people would agree, in a perfect world, we would have a regular schedule that we would look at things and not be reactionary. So I will just continue to talk about that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Helsley.
For anybody who wasn't tuned into the workshop the other day, Mr. Johnson, would you explain how they got off-cycle anyway that they used to be with the other districts? I mean, it's kind of weird, but interesting.
Yes, in 1969 was the first election that was held under the current existing election system. When the change was made, I believe there was a bargain made to allow the sitting council member for the 5th District serve a longer term, because she had just been elected into office, and they did not want to first force her to run for reelection in a very short period of time.
Thank you, sir. We want those rules, too.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And so I think I have voiced some concern as well about all of the district representatives rolling off at the same time. So thank you for that history, Mr. Johnson, about why that happened, why the 5th District was not on the same schedule, because it sounds like at some point, all district seats were on the election ballot at the same time. Is that a correct statement?
I'm not confident I know the answer to that, about the cycle that was on before '69.
Okay. So, I mean, what we have is that you'll have six representatives rolling off that have institutional knowledge about government, just like we all had to get acclimated and had to get oriented when we came on. And we were fortunate to have sitting city council members who were able to kind of help us through that process, not to take anything away from the three at-large seats whatsoever. So, again, I think putting it on the ballot, as we will, potentially these other items, is probably going to be the better route for us to take at this point.
Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas, can you help us understand what you said about at a later date, language would be updated in what we're voting on?
Oh, yes. It's just, in this meeting, I'm going to make an amendment, and it was actually, to a point you and I talked about in the workshop. And there was some confusing language. If you look at the substance of it, it probably wouldn't matter, but we're not all lawyers looking at language. And if you, I guess more of a layperson, actually, or less, even not even that, if you looked at that language, it was misleading. But what I would like to do is make an amendment just on one sentence, the one that you and I talked about at the workshop.
And so are you going to wait for the second reading to do the amendment?
No, I was going to do it tonight, but I wasn't quite sure what the protocol was about discussing the different referendums or...
Mr. Frost?
You can make that a proposed amendment right now.
Okay, well, let's do that now, and we'll get it done. If we look at, let's see if I can find it here. There we are. If we look at Section 2, that's on packet number 833. And yes, for the public, I said that page 833 of a long jacket. But it is the second sentence in the second paragraph. And the way it is right now, it reads, "The terms of the office of the six geographically distributed council members shall expire on the 20th day of December 2025, or at such time as a successor is qualified or sworn into office." Now, the way it reads, it almost sounds like my term would end on the 20th day of December 2025, but, you know, I go two more years because we're out of sync. The following language, "or at some time as a successor is qualified and sworn into office," actually would take care of that if you look deeper, but it's just, it's confusing. And so Director Swanson and I talked, and we would suggest that that second sentence is simply replaced with the sentence, "The terms of the office of the geographically distributed council members currently designated as districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 shall expire on the 20th day of December 2025, or at such time as a successor is qualified and sworn into office." So that would substitute the second sentence. What would stay and be more explanatory is, after that, it says, "The term beginning December 18, 2027, for the council member from the 5th Council District will be for two years and shall end on December 15, 2029." And thereafter, will align geographically with the other council members' terms for four years.
Second. I have a motion and a second for Councilmember Thomas's amendment. Now we'll have a discussion on the amendment. Are there any questions or discussion on the amendment? Councilwoman Parker, is there light related to the amendment or the original proposal?
I think it's still a little unclear, but it would only be unclear until Councilmember Thomas's term ends, and so I think that's fine.
And this language actually won't affect the way that it will go on the charter, on the ballot, so it'll still be the same on the ballot. I think that's correct, isn't it, Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Any discussion around the amendment? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the amendment passes. Back to the original, or excuse me, now to the ordinance as amended. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12B is an ordinance of the Council of the City of Knoxville to amend the Charter of the City of Knoxville, specifically Chapter 412 of the Private Acts of 1923 of the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, entitled "An Act to Incorporate the City of Knoxville and Knox County, Tennessee, and Define the Rights, Powers, and Liabilities of the Same, to Fix the Boundaries of Said Municipalities and Repeal All Acts or Parts of Acts in Conflict With This Act, and All Acts Amendatory There, 2, by amending Article 7, Section 707, so as to replace members of council elected by district in Section B with members of council elected at large regionally with residency requirements, and amending provisions of Article 7, Section 707B and C, so as to provide for primary and regular elections for city council, amending Article 4, Section 401 and 402, and Article 7, Section 704, for consistency with this council composition, and further providing for the submission of this ordinance to qualified voters of the City of Knoxville for approval as provided in the, this ordinance to the qualified voters of the City of Knoxville for approval as provided in Article 11, Section 9 of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
Councilmember, we have some members of the public who have signed up to speak to this item. One member in favor, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 6 opposed. Again, council's rules are to allow for three speakers, both in favor or opposed. So in favor of the item is...
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Parker.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend our rules, since we are considering charter amendments. I think it's important that we hear from the public. But I do need a second to make a motion.
There's been a motion and a second to suspend the rules to allow for up to...
Well, there's just six.
Okay.
All six.
All six? All speakers, how about that? I think there's six or seven. Yeah, so seven, I think, actually.
It's all seven.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. I, let's see, in favor, first up, Reverend Harold Middlebrook. He's on the list. Reverend Middlebrook, if you would state your name and address for the record, and you have up to five minutes to speak to council.
My name is Harold Middlebrook, 2334 Dandridge, Jackodome. For almost 50 years, I've been wrestling and fighting with this whole idea about how we elect our council members. For more than 20 years, I was one of those who said that we ought to elect in the district for the primary, elect in the district for the city at large. I was of that opinion because during my early days, I was a civil rights fighter. I fought for integration. What I got was desegregation. But I fought that in the hopes that minds would change, that hearts would change. Since that time, we've been voting, that you elect the person in the district, they have to run citywide. That concerned me. But in the last few years, I think I've seen a change in the attitude of the people of this city. I've seen some hearts change. I've seen some people run in the district, and people across the city stood with them. I've even seen this city vote for Barack Obama. That was a mystery to me for a long time, and I just shouted. Of course, I hope they're going to do it for Kamala Harris also, but that's another issue. I'm of the opinion that as we look at the demographics and the change, as we look at the fact that this city is beginning to change and to consider people, I'm so happy that Councilmember Parker has been able to stand in this city twice and run at-large, and the people of this city have elected her. I'm delighted for that. And so I say to you that perhaps, given what the state is trying to do to us and all of the issues, we need to allow the people of the city, by referendum, to speak to this issue, to say yes or no, and to carry on dialogue. So I am appealing to you, consider putting this issue before the people. Let the people speak. Let the people have a voice in what happens in our city and those who will represent the city. I believe, I'm convinced, maybe that's just the preacher in me, but I'm convinced that hearts are changing, and that we will ensure that there will still be representatives from our community elected to the city council, because it will give us a chance to see the makeup of the total city and what we can do together when we work in unison. Please, give the people a voice and a chance to speak on this issue.
Thank you. First speaker who has signed up in opposition to item 12B is Mr. Bentley Marlowe.
That's a tough act to follow. Bentley Marlowe, 322 Douglas Avenue, 37921. My opposition here is much like it was before. I don't think that something of the magnitude of a charter change should come about so swiftly. It is, it reads, I mean, many of you have told me, it's a reactionary move in response to the state legislature. And I'm just befuddled, why did we wait so long to address it? Why didn't we get ahead of the state legislature? Why did we not address these issues before? I mean, Dr. Middlebrook just said that for many years, he thought that the district should elect their own. Why did we not ever consider that before? Why are we scared of it now? Just because this might be the brainchild of Eric Watier and Elaine Davis and the Republican supermajority in Nashville, that doesn't necessarily make it wrong. We only vote for one state representative. I live in the 6th City Council District, and I've lived in Sam McKenzie's district. I can only vote for him or his opponent, DeShalundy. I can't vote for all the rest of the state representatives that make up the Knoxville Coalition. I only get to vote for one congressman. I don't get to vote for all the congressmen that represent the state of Tennessee. Why should the city be any different? And I've heard many of you say, once we get past the knee-jerk reaction of, well, you know who sponsored this, or you know this is a Republican conspiracy, once we get beyond that, nobody really has a good answer why, other than the standard seems to be the new boilerplate is, well, right now you get to vote for all nine, and so you're losing a say. Well, that would work in theory if we knew that all of the six districts voted at about the same turnout. They don't. So what we see is the 2nd District, West Knoxville, has an oversized say in everything. And if you want to doubt that, let's go back and look at the missing middle and how we, hours we spent wrestling missing middle stuff, when it was limited to TDR that had nothing to do with most of West Knoxville or the 2nd District, but they showed up in numbers, they filled up your inboxes, and their area was excluded entirely. But they got a say. Look at the proposal I had last week over the definition of kitchen and how it applies to NADU. That had an oversized presence and say and email from West Knoxville. So to me, I think it gives too much power to West Knoxville when everyone has to answer to them, and you have to answer to them if you're elected city at large, because they come out and vote in such great numbers. So let's think this through. Use me as an example. I can take the ridicule or shame that comes with this. I can't win the district I live in and worked in and operated a business in for 20 years. Just look at what I did last year. There's no way I can win it, under the current rules, or if we just leave the state alone and let the state default go. There's no way I could win it. But under Mr. Roberto's rule, under this provision, there's a chance I could win. I would lose the 6th District. None of my neighbors would support me, but because I polled so well out in West Knoxville and in the 5th, that I might just win. So I'm sitting here, once again, advocating something that's against my self-interest because I don't think it's right. And, you know, I don't want to get personal or anything, but I heard Mr. Roberto say about my appeal last meeting, that I was trying to circumvent and play with loose language in our zoning code. I think that this is nothing more than trying to circumvent and play with language to get a... to get around a state law. So, I'm just gonna call it the way I see it. I think if we're going to do this, we need to have a large concerted public information gathering campaign with public input, a lot of robust discussion, and we could, should come up with a solution that's not a reaction to what's going on in Nashville. It ought to be what's best for Knoxville. And I believe what's best for Knoxville is letting the voices of the six districts each have their say to provide their spice and flavor to this council and trust that the three at-larges, one-third of council, can provide a cohesive statesman-like
Next up, Emmett Lipshutz.
Hello, my name is Emmett Lipshutz. I'm from District 1, zip code 37920. Forgive me if my comments are a little unorganized, but I have some serious concerns about this proposal. I think it's pretty undemocratic, but I'll start with some context. We've had a problem with representation in this country generally for the past 200-plus years for a lot of different reasons. But a big one, this might not make sense at first for me being opposed, is our district system. One representative can't represent everyone in one district. There's a lot of different constituent groups based on age or race or even ideology. Like in this city, people have a different vision for what the city should be like in a given district. So one person can't just represent all those people. But at the very least, in this country, we at least, and in the city right now, kind of, and cities across the country, we at least have representation for geographic groups, for groups of neighborhoods. So that, say, for, that there's a representative for different geographic areas, so the whole city won't just favor policies or a vision for the city that favors some groups, some areas of the city more than others. We at least have that right now. But this proposal would get rid of that. It would make all the representatives, all the council members elected by everyone in the city, so that not even that constituent group, not even that, those groups of neighborhoods would be represented by a, a single council person. I think this is really based on a philosophy that a single representative can be kind of like the best person or the best person that will always be able to do the best deliberation, have the best interest for everyone in the city in mind. And that just can't really be the case. Knoxville is too big, too big and too diverse of society for that. We need different voices. I know that one point here is that council members will still have to have residency requirements. I don't think that this is relevant at all because it should be the voters in the district who are electing the people who are meant to represent them. Another thing that was brought up in the workshop that was held last week is the issue of cohesion, that having all of our council members elected citywide would make the body less divided. I think this is a very undemocratic way of thinking. This is the same kind of thinking that could be used by military hunters or police states to, sorry to use extreme language there, but this seems like an extremely wrong proposal to me, to justify their own undemocratic nature. Excuse me. I think if we're going to make a change, I understand that maybe changing the system to be as little different as possible seems to be a priority for this council. I think the two options that are making both of the elections, the primary and the general citywide, are making them both in the district. I think that changing them to be just the district voters is the more democratic option. And I think that Ordinance 12C does a pretty good job of that. I would really hope that you would vote for that. And if you feel like there are serious problems with that, I would really hope that with the limited time that you have left, that you could talk with each other and try to work something out. Thank you.[884.01][884.01](APPLAUSE)
Next speaker is Inzenga Amani.
My name is Inzenga Amani, 1312 Hawthorne Avenue. So before we touch on at-large versus district voting, I just have to say, have to have some real talk with some folks. I am in a united front with many of y'all up here. Tommy, Andrew, Charlie, Debbie, Amelia, Seema, Gwen, Lauren, I am in a united front with you against the oppressive authoritarian and fascist forces that have overtaken the Republican Party. I understand your fear and want to exclude them from city council. But there is no guarantee the city will, will remain so blue, especially with population shifts and gentrification, and this change could put us in violations of the Voting Act. So we have an unfortunate choice between endorsing the political temporary democratic rule, right, or endorsing black representation in city government. Again, I understand the fear of the NAACP and local Democrats and progressives, and I understand the optimism of Reverend Middlebrook. But I am heavily disappointed by the willingness to cast aside the gains of the civil rights movement, the gains that you and your people fought for, brother, and send our local democracy back fifty years and disenfranchise black voters. Now, of course, our district's and voting system is not perfect. Voter suppression and disenfranchisement already run rampant. Folks who have records, don't have IDs, can't vote, for instance. But nonetheless, we do not need to make things worse. So for some historical context, I just Googled some history about this and like have some little snippets of some articles. In 1912, Knoxville changed its election system, narrowing down the number of seats on council from eleven to five, requiring candidates to run citywide. Before 1912, black council members were common. The number of seats changed over the years, but after 1912, it was fifty-seven years before a black person served again on council. In an interview with Bob Booker, he said, the late and great Bob Booker, he said, "The city changed the current system for the 1969 election after Congress passed the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Voting Rights Act of 1965." Instead requiring candidates to run on citywide, the city went to a district primary system and added two seats, increasing council from seven to nine members. That worked. The oldest Robertson Jr., who was black, was elected the following year. But even so, "The system was not equitable," Booker went on to say. "It has resulted in black representation on council, yes, but it allows the wider whites' majority city to decide which black candidate it prefers." Because of this, he said, "The city's election process should be changed." Now, he was not saying to change it back. He was saying to change it deeper so black folks can have a voice in this city. Who benefits from at-large and citywide races? West Knoxville, as was already eloquently demonstrated, will continue to have an even a higher impact on candidates of all districts. This further incentivizes candidates to prioritize the predominantly white, middle-class, and wealthier citizens of West Knoxville over the interests of those in their own districts. It empowers developers, real estate businesses, corporations, influential businesses, because they are the ones most able to bankroll large citywide campaigns. This, this rule entrenches the Democratic Party and the city, city government for the immediate future. It empowers both political parties who have the resources to run citywide campaigns at the expense of grassroots, working class, and progressive candidates. I don't want to hear our, our, our races and nonpartisan, we are all mature adults, we don't have to lie to each other. Do we reverse the gains of the civil rights movement and disenfranchise people of color, working-class communities, and grassroots candidates for temporary political gain? Or do we believe we can do better? I urge you to vote against this and support the ordinance. Thank you.[1132.83][1132.83](APPLAUSE)
Next up, Rick Roach. You thought we forgot you.
Thank you. Rick Roach, 37917 now. I've watched here in the city of Knoxville, things change in terms of representation, and watched how that has an effect on particular communities. And as Inzenga and others have brought up, the fact that, you know, that's how you get things done. That's how you shape the face of the city, the face of a community. And the true, and what we see going on now versus what I saw, you know, back in the sixties, and I'm against, I was gonna be for, but I'm against. What we had was a tight community within East Knoxville. Yes, historically forced into that economically, but we survived and we shaped it as best we could with restrictive laws in place. You all know the history, if you care to remember. Okay? So now, when I hear Reverend Middlebrook mention integration versus desegregation, well, that was a disempowerment move back in the day. Thoroughly disempowered African Americans or people of African descent in Knoxville, black folk, if you will. All right? And that's what's happened. And so now, to all of this, to all of this, I've had, I've had white developers, real estate developers, give the lowdown, you know, telling the truth, hey, you know, we're gonna devalue a community. Okay? And the only way we can do that is through planning commission, which is as big a decision-maker, because they're appointed, they're not elected. Okay? And so the essence of a community is literally sucked out. Okay? So, we have no representation, true representation. I mean, if we're not disturbed by what Inzenga quoted about how willy-nilly rules change in order to control a particular population, if we're not concerned about that, if we don't want to fess up to that, well, you, you know, don't, don't look at me because I talk crazy and other people talk crazy and raise our voices. Okay? Okay, we're not making it up. We know the effect that it's had. And again, I'll use this because I know it well. Look at the, and it affects every phase of how we live in relationship to each other, in our communities. If you go look at East Knoxville, okay, 1990s, we had all kinds of promises. Okay? All these millions of dollars coming through. It hadn't happened. East Knoxville, from right over here at Summit and Hall of Fame and going east, south of Magnolia. Okay? Yeah, big plans, baseball stadium. Okay? But the, the deal is this, there's no political power. Sorry, Gwen, we don't have any political power. We don't. In the sixth district, East Knoxville primarily, and Mechanicsville, Monestelle also. Okay? The gerrymandering of districts, I mean, sixth district is, is literally a worm. And what did you wrap around that sixth district? You wrapped around the fourth district. Okay? And some of the fifth district, of which you are an unopposed representative, twice. Once or once? Okay, so who ran against you the first time?
(INAUDIBLE)
Okay, that's right, you're right. Excuse me. Okay? But you ran unopposed. Think about that, in the fifth district. And even Martin ran unopposed one time. Okay? So that means people ain't voting because they don't think they have to, or they don't think it'll do any good. Okay? So that might be a remedy. But if you look at East Knoxville again, okay, the, the, the energy, the, the, the resources have been sucked out. And we have to play games about how much money, how many millions of dollars potentially will come in and have an effect on this, on this particular community. We have to play games with that. We can't come up with the, you guys can't come up with a solidified plan to revitalize East Knoxville, which you have depleted. You have depleted it.[1459.51][1459.51](APPLAUSE)
Next person signed up to speak is Deidre Harper. Ms. Harper, will you come to the mic, say your name and address for the record? You'll have up to five minutes to speak. After Ms. Harper is Emmanuel Bailey, followed by Jax Fox.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I'm Deidre Harper, District 6, and 37917. So I did send an email to council, and I only heard back from one particular council member, so I'm going to read the email that I did send, just to have it on the record, as well as follow up with some additional comments. So I am writing to express my concerns and submit a request regarding the recent amendments presented at yesterday's city council workshop that I did attend it. Attended, following this, the discussion, I left with significant apprehension about the current and future direction of our council, particularly concerning Councilmember Roberto's proposal on elections and its potential adverse impact on the sixth district. Historical data has shown that citywide or at-large elections are often detrimental to minority communities, and it is the council's responsibility to recognize and address these patterns and systems that negatively affect these communities. This proposal presents an opportunity to use your influence and your vote for the greater good and to counteract systemic racism. Previously, this council unanimously passed a resolution acknowledging and working to rectify the wrongs of urban renewal. Voting for Councilmember Roberto's proposal will undermine these efforts. Although the proposal may seem like a minor change, its implications for communities of color are significant and harmful. History and current events support this assertion. While renaming the districts for clarity may simplify conversations, the proposal does not address the confusion around the at-large seats, which are identified by the letters. The potential for confusion remains. The primary issue lies in the proposed change to the voting system for district representatives. This type of election system has historically been unfavorable for communities resembling Knoxville's sixth district. And furthermore, the existence of at-large representatives is intended to address citywide concerns. I urge the council to demonstrate bold leadership and prevent the establishment of oppressive systems. So with that said, I had heard conversations, because I did make phone calls and people did reach out about where we were with this particular vote, and I heard that, well, going citywide will make it easier for people to think about other districts. But I think that that is not an accurate statement to be made, because as a district representative, it is your job to worry about your district. And it's not to exclude other districts, however, because when you vote, you do have to keep the whole city in mind. So to say that just because you're citywide will give you the opportunity or make you at, all of a sudden, feel like you're concerned about the whole district, I don't think that's accurate to say and a fair case to be made in this particular dish, in this particular situation. Additionally, we talked about, well, I think that going to a citywide election will allow for more diversity on this particular council. And it was mentioned that Amelia Parker, Councilwoman Amelia Parker, is, I guess, an example of being citywide. But look how long it has taken for that to happen. Additionally, we have a diverse council. I heard that this is the most diverse council that we have ever had. But when you think about some of the votes that's come across this council, specifically the baseball stadium, diversity has not played a, an impact and not played a part in really voting in favor of the community. We had people come here and talk about having a community benefits agreement that was ignored. That was something that could have been voted on to be a diverse council if that was the case. So I don't think that is a fair statement to be made. And lastly, I heard that, well, District 6 is changing demographics, and that is true. But why is that? District 6 does not have the resources that it needs. We've not had council representation that's gonna make sure that we have the resources, that we have what we need in District 6, that the voices of District 6 are being heard. So I don't think that the arguments that are being raised and the reason for going to citywide election is unfavorable to District 6. And I just really urge you to think about history. Yeah, we could say there's a few times where citywide elections may have helped in this particular instance, but overall, that may have been a few out of majority. And when you think about the majority, we have to think about our people, and we have to think about District 6 voters, and that is where predominantly black voters are, and that is in District 6. So again, I encourage you to think about this wisely, to think about this, and really, if you're about diversity, if you're about protecting the black vote and making sure that District 6 has the representation that it needs, I think that you would vote against the proposal that is before you today.[1789.82][1789.82](APPLAUSE)
Next up is Emmanuel Bailey. Next up is Emmanuel Bailey.
I'm Emmanuel Bailey, and I live at 318 East Fifth Avenue, here in Knoxville. I'm a late entrant, because I'm concerned. I'm opposed to this proposal, primarily because I believe in neighborhoods, I believe in district representation. I know that you can have a lot more influence with people that you know. Who influences you? The most valuable thing you probably have, unless you're a business owner, is your property. So you can depend on your neighbors to help you protect that, because they are in the same area that you're in. It's the same kind of a process that should be used here. We should respect each other through district representation, because those are the people that know and understand the needs of the people that they represent. And you can put that forward. I think all of you, primarily, are representing your neighborhood, even the, even the, even the, even the representatives that we elect at large. We're certainly concerned about the city, but everybody doesn't get the same kind of access, opportunity, education, and access. And the better way to try to broach this thing about power is to continue to allow neighborhoods, districts, to be seats of the influence that's necessary to run our city, cuz those are the people that understand it. You drive a particular route. I had a friend that was at the university, and he did what he called mental map studies. And what he did, what, what he found out is most people only travel 30 blocks. How big of an area is that? That's what you know. Those are, those are the issues that you can be familiar with, and that people can influence you regarding. And that's why the system, in terms of district representation, logically, should be kinda seated around that, and the rest of the members should respect that, cuz no, none of us know everything, okay? How many of you know me? What do I do? Do you know the businesses I own, the property I own? No, you have no idea about it. So, all I'm saying is, that's the best way to use this system, and we ought to try and do it that way. We understand that there are things that are being pulled from the state, but they still can be seated around district, district representation as the primary issue. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. The final speaker is Jax Fox.
Hello, council. My name is Jax Fox. I live in the Norwood neighborhood in District Three, 37912. And I'm here to speak against Proposal B, because I've lived all over Knoxville. I am from a nearby town, I moved here for college, and I've lived in different areas of the city. And they have different concerns, but they do work towards the same goal. But there are different people that live in different areas, like, I'm not gonna speak to District Six, because I've never lived there. But I currently, like I said, live in District Three, and there is a wide variety of people living in that area of the city. And I just find that this feels like trying to cling to the old system that we've had, which honestly is very confusing for a lot of people. I regularly am explaining to people my age, I'm in my early 30s and younger, about how like, city elections work and who they can vote for, at what times. And honestly, it's pretty difficult for a lot of people to want to go through and vet so many people and feel confident about it, and it actually, from my personal experience, I've seen people decide that they shouldn't vote, because they're so concerned about voting for the wrong person. And I really feel, everyone who's spoken before me has raised very good points, especially about how different each neighborhood can be, and I think focusing from, instead of focusing at making everything at large, making it more districted, will allow people who are running for office to focus more on what their district is actually trying to say. And I think a lot of districts are wanting similar things. You know, they wanna protect the character of their neighborhood while still having economic opportunity, but it's a challenge that different areas of the city have had different opportunity over the years. So I think that going completely at large may homogenize city council in a way that would not be helpful for citizens of many districts. I'm just really hoping that y'all think a little more. I know people were talking about feeling that it was rushed. I don't know how long y'all have to change the charter, and I'm curious of what would happen if people rejected what's on the ballot, whichever one you choose. So, I think taking the time to realize that, I, I know that you guys are not doing this flippantly, and again, it's from the state, but this is a chance to right a lot of issues that have come up with elections over the years. So, people are watching, and they're really hoping that it continues to have, they feel heard, and I think having a more districted approach rather than at-large would definitely help people feel more seen and heard and have, you know, being able to be like, I'm X number of constituents, like, it was said before, I don't get to vote for the other dis, other state representative districts. And they still are bringing money that back to Knoxville that affect me, or not bringing money back to Knoxville in a lot of ways. So, yeah, that's, it's hard to be concise, everyone has been such a wonderful speaker, but just being concerned at the impacts that might happen in switching to a completely at-large, rather than making sure that individual areas of Knoxville get individualized representation, because, I mean, I think it's best when, honestly, some city council members disagree, because you have to be able to have people who look at everything from all angles. It's being able to disagree and then work together is what's important. So I think making it at-large runs too much of a risk of homogenization for every seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for the people that have signed up to speak, and now council will deliberate. We will start with Councilman Roberto, who drafted this item, so Councilman Roberto.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. After a change in state law, our election process is no longer consistent with the law. And as such, council's considering ways to bring our charter into line with the state law. The sole purpose of this charter amendment is to preserve the right of every Knoxville voter to vote on all nine members of their city council. So I'm addressing that to the 105,020 registered voters in the city of Knoxville. The alternative district-only approach will mean that every voter, no matter where you live in the city, will no longer be able to vote for all nine members of council. Instead, every voter will only get to vote for their specific district representatives and the three at-large members of council only. You're going to go from a process where you stepped into the ballot box last, and you got to vote for nine people, and you're gonna go down to four. That means that a majority of council will no longer be accountable to every voter. This also means that as few as 500 voters could determine who is on council. And remember that council makes decisions that affect our entire city. Dividing up council into districts only invites gerrymandering into play, and I don't wanna see politicians picking who they want to vote for them. I wanna keep councilable, council accountable to everyone. Ultimately, I want this to be a choice for the voters, and let them make a decision about whether or not they want district-only, or they want the hybrid-at-large option. I'm not going to cast a vote to disenfranchise every voter and reduce them from voting from nine votes on council to four. I think-
Please don't interrupt.
-that this decision is for all of the voters to make. The folks in this room, we need to make sure that all of the registered voters have the opportunity to make that vote, and that's what this vote is about. It doesn't enact this, it gives people a choice. Council has received support from Reverend Middlebrook this evening, as well as from the NAACP to pass this, and I just wanted to read one of the paragraphs from the open letter that the NAACP Knoxville branch put out today. "It is with this premise, Knoxville NAACP strongly encourages city council to support Agenda Item 12B. The voters in the city of Knoxville must use their voice to choose. Moreover, to improve voter education, Knoxville NAACP is committed to facilitating public forums, workshops, and information dissemination, to equip voters to make informed decisions for our democracy. We welcome you to join us in this task, as we know together our democracy is greater." And I'm committed, and I think all council members will be committed, to working with any group, the NAACP or any other group, and hold information centers so that, or information dialogues, so that the voters are educated and can make a decision, and that's what I think we should do. I'm gonna close just with a quote from Theodas Robinson, an opinion piece that he wrote back in 2021. This is just one of the paragraphs. "There is a talk, there is talk claiming that white voters have veto power over who serves on city council from District Six, but the same can be said conversely, that voters in that district have veto power over the other five districts. I'm no mathematical genius, but I understand that on a nine-member council, five constitutes a majority. If the system changes to district-only election, a majority on council will never have to campaign for a single vote from residents living outside their districts. A majority on the council could never be held accountable for their actions by voters from any district, and I can't say it better than that. Thank you."
Thank you. Councilman Roberto, council, look for lights, is there any discussion? Councilwoman Ryder.
So I'm gonna start with, there's a lot of elephants in the room, I feel like there's a couple of different comments. There's a lot of really wonderful comments that were made, and I can sit here and think in pros and cons to every system. And I feel like the system that we had, or ha, we're gonna have to say had, cuz it's past tense, has worked very well. And I, so one of the comments made was, why didn't we get ahead of this? So I'm just gonna be real blatant here. We did. We went to Nashville, we sat down, we had a conversation, face-to-face. Hey, why are you proposing this? Why are you sponsoring this? Why is this on the state legislature? Our charter reads that we're home rule, this is for our voters. Whether you agree with me or not, this is for our voters to decide. It's not for people not here to decide. So after that conversation, the person who I actually get to vote for, I'm gonna leave titles and names out, somebody I can touch at the ballot box, they said, okay. We said, hey, we're gonna have a workshop on this, we're gonna put this to our voters, let's let our voters decide. You guys decided that this wasn't fair, you decided to put something on the state ledge to vote on, and, but we think that this is a discussion for the locals. This is for our local folks to decide. That's how we decided how we got there. So, so we, we were gonna do that. Okay, great, you're gonna do that. So what then happened, as things happened, see, this goes to the question of, we don't get to vote on every representative that goes to Nashville, we don't get to vote for every representative that goes to Washington DC, et cetera. So what they did is they got somebody that we can't touch at the ballot box to put their name on it and bring it back. So the person who that I can vote for, they were like, cool, I promised you I was gonna bring it forward. I'm gonna get my buddy in another county that doesn't even have anything to do with your jurisdiction, they'll put their name on it, and we'll run around and we'll whip the votes along the party lines and pass this, and that's what happened. So we did try to get ahead of it, and we had a very good conversation, and it was, yeah, we're gonna come back and we're gonna put this to you guys and let you vote on it, have a workshop, come up with different things, be more ahead of the game. And so they decided that's not how they wanna play. So that's why we find ourselves the way we are today, we don't get to make this choice. And I'll be honest, if I had run citywide the first time in 2017, I probably wouldn't be here today. I won my district because I was well-known and very involved in my district. I'm not sure what's proposed is the best solution, I'm not putting it into the charter. If, if we vote on it tonight and pass, whichever we put is what we put on the ballot for everyone to vote on, which is what we told the state legislators we wanted. We want our citizens to make this decision. And it's infuriating when someone betrays you like that and says, yeah, okay, take this back and you guys decide amongst your own people how you're gonna do it, and then they, 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 they change and betray you, cuz that's how it felt. So, anyway, I'm gonna let my colleagues speak, that's all I'll say, but that's what happens when you don't get to vote on people. They do things that, 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 you know, they'll just do whatever to you because you can't touch them at the ballot box, and that's part of the issue. And the other thing I'll say is, when I, long before I was on council, I was involved in neighborhood stuff, and we would go to county commission, and I'm not trying to knock county commission, but they and school board are organized differently than we are. And you would go, and there would be people there, and they saw your district, you couldn't touch them at the ballot box, they didn't care what you thought, and they would vote on things and decide to maybe concentrate services or different things in different parts of town, and they could rally up the votes against the one that did represent you, because they saw fit that, that, that certain parts of town should be certain ways. And they don't have to come and meet you and come to your neighborhood meetings, they don't have to knock in the doors in your area and hear what you have to say, and how your district and what your community wants, and that's, then the votes often portray that, and so that's why I think the system we've had has been a better system, but we're not allowed to have it anymore.
Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have several concerns about this proposal, obviously, which is why I brought my own proposal. But let me start here. I'm hearing the chorus of voices who are stating that they wanna give voters a choice. However, what I'm hearing is a choice between Roberto's proposal or nothing, with the assumption that if they take no action, it's the same as passing my ordinance, which is not true, on multiple, in multiple ways. And I'll talk about my ordinance next. But what I wanna speak to on that issue is how, I, I think that's an unfortunate process for us to move forward. I believe that's confusing for the voters, and I believe anytime the city council puts an ordinance forward for a vote, the city often puts money behind promoting that ordinance- the city often puts money behind promoting that ordinance option, that potential charter change. It becomes confusing for voters. And it could easily become, you know, something that they feel council supports and wants them to support, rather than it be something that council is saying, I'm not taking a strong position on it, I want to hear from the voters. I think what goes on the ballot from City Council as a charter amendment is seen as an endorsement of the process that council wants to see take hold, now that the state law has been passed. So I do think that's a bit disingenuous. And council members should either, you know, own their position that they feel we should go at-large, to a full at-large system, and that's why they're backing it, or not, because it's going to become confusing for voters. On the issues, the main issue that brings me pause when I read the ordinance was shifting our elections to an all-at-large system. You know, my background, I have a legal background, a masters of law, have interned at multiple civil rights organizations, including the premier civil rights organizations that fights for the Voting Rights Act year after year. And at-large systems have consistently been questioned since the passage of the Voting Rights Act. In cities like ours, in cities like Knoxville, that have a significant racial minority population, we have a significant black population, we have a majority-minority district where we can see a significant number of our black population living. We tend to see a voting pattern that comes out of that district. All of these identify a majority-minority district that must be protected. And the Voting Rights Act not only requires us to protect it, but when we see factors taking place in our community that can lead to the dilution of that minority vote, it's actually our responsibility to look at redistricting, to re-strengthen that district. It's not our job to say, oh, well, you know, the city's changing. Let's forget about the Voting Rights Act and the Civil Rights Act. We've elected one person at-large in the last 147 years. One person of color. We can get rid of that. No, actually, within the Voting Rights Act, it calls upon us to look at how we can strengthen that district through our redistricting process. Was that five minutes?
Yeah.
Wow.
You're on the roll, but I'm going to have to pass the mic and come back to you. Is that okay? Councilwoman Fugit?
Thank you. This is a struggle for me. It is interesting that the Republican majority of the state and civil rights activists are advocating for district-only elections. I do think there is a real, I mean, that's what I heard tonight, lots of people who spoke liked the district only. And there's merit to that. I can't tell you today exactly how I feel about either one of these proposals. As I said at the workshop, I liked the way we voted. I liked a district picking the top two people they liked out of their district, and everybody running citywide. I think that has given us a pretty good governance model for the last 50 some-odd years. I also think, you know, people's motives can be questioned for why they want the changes that they want. And you can find a pro and con and unintended consequences with every way we vote. As we see in our city and county, our city tends to vote ideologically more one-way than our county at-large does. One of the concerns that you can get by citywide or countywide for lots of things, if it were that way, is that ideological minorities that live in certain parts of our community won't have a voice either. And I think that's part of what some people were concerned about at the state, if we're just saying it like it is. I think that was the motive behind that. So I think lots of people can feel not represented by citywide. I put my name on this a couple of weeks ago, and I have struggled with it ever since, because I too am torn about both ways. But in the absence of putting something forward that lets people vote about keeping the ability to vote for every city council member, we will get, we don't have to do anything. We don't have to do anything, and we will get district-only, starting in January. That's a fact. We don't have to do a thing. We'll get district-only and three at-large seats. So we don't have to do anything. I'm not going to really question the motives of my colleagues for why they feel the way they feel, because I think everybody that serves on this city council loves this city and wants what's best for us. But robust dialogue is what we need to do. I think, I mean, talk to me 30 minutes ago, and I didn't, you know, the more we talk, because my colleagues make very good points, our citizens make very good points, this is not to be entered into lightly. But if we don't put something on the ballot, we have no choice. If this were to go on the ballot or something like it, there is from August to November to have robust community discussion and education and let people make a choice, which as my colleague, Councilwoman Ryder, said, is what we went to the city, I went on that, city representatives, I went on that trip to Nashville, too, and said, I'm not going to tell you which one, whether the way we vote is right or the way you're proposing is right. But we are a home-rule charter, and I think the citizens of the city of Knoxville are the best people to decide that. So I think everybody has made wonderful points. And depending upon the last thing I heard as of today, you know, who knows how I personally would go in the ballot box and vote? But I think if, in supporting this, I think it's about giving people a choice. I don't disagree with Councilwoman Parker that if the city council puts it on here, people will think that it's unanimous, and it's what we think they ought to do. But it's incumbent upon us to make sure people talk about it. I don't know that I cleared anything up, and my time is up, but I'm just trying to say, this is hard, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilwoman McKenzie?
Sorry. Mr. Frost, a quick question before I get started. So the two agenda items that are before us, is this an either-or proposition for us to vote for? Or could both of them potentially be on the ballot?
Well, first, right now, we only have one thing in front of us. We have Councilmember Parker's proposal next, but we had Councilmember Thomas's also. I'm a little, we'd have to reconcile, Mr. Thomas's proposal is going to change the election for the 5th district time, and I'm not sure how that's going to interplay with Councilmember Parker's proposal. But as Councilmember-
I can't wait to reach out to the Tennessee bar. I can't wait.
As Councilmember Fugit said, you know, we're going to, even if council does not act, we are going to have a change despite what the charter says, based on what the state does. What Councilmember Roberto and Councilmember Parker, they both call for a, if an at-large member receives 50% plus one, that will be decided in the primary. However, Councilmember Parker's proposal does not have that, and she, of course, can correct me if I'm wrong, does not have that for the district representatives, where they would continue to run in the general election. So we do have a little potential conflict right there. I believe that's, that might be the only conflict, I believe.
So if I hear you correctly, you're saying that in Councilmember Parker's, hers is 50% plus one, you don't have to run again for at-large only? All right. So could both of these potentially, well, all three, be on the ballot?
Well, if all three are on the ballot, I think there's a potential, if all three are on the ballot and all three pass, I think there could be some issues because of the differences between, you know, who all the 50% plus one applies to or does not apply to. And I don't know about the, hadn't thought about the interplay of Councilmember Thomas's proposal about changing the cycle.
So can we have that conversation, I guess, maybe when we get to that agenda item with Ms. Parker? Okay? And very, thank you. So very quickly, so we're talking about history, and we're talking about numbers. I want to give some statistics around the 6th district. So the demographic that makes up the 6th district is not reflective of the ballot box typically. So currently, there are 14,966 registered voters in the 6th district. In 2017, the 6th district had 13 people running for a city council seat. And those 13 people, we split 1,412 votes in the district. I walked away with 22.24% of the votes, and Jennifer Montgomery, 17.28% of the vote. We went citywide. At that time, citywide voter turnout for the 6th district was 10,564 votes, citywide. I got 57.97%, Ms. Montgomery got 42.3%. Fast forward to 2021, while the city elections are nonpartisan, there was a concerted effort by the Republican Party to make them partisan in 2021, where they were tacking all five of the incumbent seats. I actually found out in one of their smear campaigns that I was a white supremacist, who knew? In that race, there were three people. There was myself, Mr. Holt, and Deidra Harper, who spoke to us earlier. In that election, in the district, there were 1,670 votes cast amongst the three people. There are 11 districts in the 6th district. I won seven of those districts, Mr. Holt won four. The split was 52%, 25%, and 22%. When we went citywide, 20,829 people came out to vote. We split that between myself and he at 57.53% and 42.47%. So I am of the strong belief that based on the results of the 6th district election in 2021 was the catalyst for the change in the state law, to have us to go district-only. Keep those numbers in mind, and that there are 2,400, an estimate of around 2,400 people who live downtown in the 6th district. We didn't even get that number of votes in our district election. So I want us to be really, really clear on, I think either way we slice it, keep it in the district, we're still at jeopardy. We are still at jeopardy because of such low voter turnout. And I know that a lot of people, we want folks to be excited about elections, be informed about elections, but this is difficult because, again, I don't want us to be disillusioned to think that in the 6th district, that a minority could lose this race, because that is absolutely a possibility because of the demographics and the low voter turnout. Thank you.
Mr. Frost?
Thank you.
You want to take a minute?
I just want to, a very important part, I totally forgot when I was trying to run through my mind on the spot, the differences between Councilmember Roberto's and Councilmember Parker's proposal. Councilman Roberto's proposal is that the regional district representatives would be on the ballot at-large, or be voted on citywide in both cases. Councilmember Parker does not have that. So there's a conflict between the two in those proposals.
Thank you. Councilwoman Singh?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Some of my concerns mirror Councilwoman McKenzie's. I feel a little bit in an awkward position. I don't know how many minority council members have ever been elected outside of the 6th district. Right? Besides your race, the at-large, but like in a different district, in this 1st district, has there been a minority? No. In the 3rd district, me. And if we change this to a district-by-district, there is, sorry. There is, my daughter, there is no way that... I could have won, basically. There would not have been, I mean, what my ethnic minority is reflected in the city of Knoxville is like .001%. You know, there are a lot of people who ask me, how can you represent us? You don't look like us. I'm like, well, white men have represented me for years, and I'm going to give it the same try to represent everybody. But that is a place where I don't want to do anything. This is a really hard decision. I don't want to do anything that moves us towards any more systemic racism at all. That's where I am worried. Which direction is this going to push this in? And I'll wrap it up by saying my concerns are similar to Councilmember McKenzie's, that I'm not even sure that the 6th district may or may not vote in a minority representative. Thank you.
Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I know I have limited time and lots to say, but I have to reiterate that when it comes to protecting the minority vote and minority representation, we can be proactive, and we shouldn't feel so powerless as city council members. If we see districts shifting, we can actually do some redistricting to protect that minority vote. In response to the District 3 representation example, since I campaigned hard in 2017 in that race and helped build the movement to run more diverse slate of candidates, I can tell you, it is the hard work of very intentional people that has produced the diversity that you see on city council. It hasn't just been a wide awakening that has just taken hold and gone throughout the city. It has been knocking on doors, talking to people, and saying, will you vote for Seema Singh Perez? Which is what it was at that time. And them not being able to repeat the name back to me. Right? We all know Seema now, we all can say that name. But when I was knocking on doors, I have to just speak for myself, in 2017, people couldn't pronounce the name, felt embarrassed to even try. So getting a more diverse leadership in place in the city, we built a movement so that we could have the back of people, so that people would even consider running in a District 3 that we knew was a more conservative district. I think you would have won in a district-only general in District 3. We put in the work to get you through the primary. You were, there were not only two candidates in the District 3 primary, there were other people in that election with bigger names in the city. people in that election with bigger names in the city that we, you know, we threw our support behind Seema and knocked them out of the primary. And I'm sure that we could have brought about that victory in the general. But with those types of elections, it takes more time because, and it's going to be easy, it would be easier in a district-only election because a district understands that they have, it is their job to elect that representative. When a district race goes citywide, then the conversation becomes, "Well, I like that person, but can they win citywide?" Well, that's a, you know, they really represent what I'm feeling here in Knoxville, but I don't, yeah, I don't think they have a chance at the city level. So there's so many people who do not even run because they, they know they're not going to get that support, or they believe they're not going to get that support to run at the citywide level. I think it definitely impacts our elections. I believe, I agree with the words of the late, great Dr. Booker, who also felt that our white majority districts had an overwhelming influence in our elections, and also helped prevent our, structure of our elections helped prevent some really good candidates running who might have run if they were running in a district-only race. So I, I just want, I don't have much time, and I don't think I can make my case in one evening. I really think that this is an issue that does take more time in consideration, even multiple workshops, to dig into what, what the courts have said about the Voting Rights Act, what, what our job and responsibility is when it comes to redistricting. You know, I regret that we did not spend more time on it when it came before, redistricting came before us recently, but it'll be back around very soon. And I believe that we need to get ready for it and, and help our residents throughout this city understand the importance of the Voting Rights Act, and help us maintain the principles here in our city. Not throw them away because we elected one black person to an at-large seat.
Thanks. I just wanted to add to that. I have, I've run four times in District III in a sense, in the primaries and then the general, the people who came out from District III. And this is, I have only won the third district one time. So if people really want to, just in the second primary, the first primary I did not win, the second general I did not win in the third district, the third primary, anyway. I'm not going to go through it. My point is, I would not have, once again, it's not about me, it's about, I mean, if we really wanted to start saying, "I see a point where people in the third district may not feel that I am their proper representation." I see that point. I'm still glad to be here, though. Thank you.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
And to that point, Councilwoman Singh, I've been looking at these numbers the last couple of days. So in District III, there were four people that split 792 votes, and Conquering had 47.60, and Councilwoman Singh had 25.13 in the district. Citywide, the two of you split 10,579 votes, and you came out with 57.73% because of the citywide vote. So, you know, so if we were to equate that, what would that have looked like, the two of you running against each other again in the third district? And so, again, I think that we find ourselves in a precarious situation, and at this point, you know, there's a lot to consider here, a lot to consider here.
Councilwoman Ryder.
So what Councilwoman McKenzie just said, to Councilwoman Singh, you did not win in your district, you won citywide. Correct, Councilwoman Singh? So you're a minority that won citywide? Okay.
Councilwoman Parker.
A minority in the city of Knoxville wins citywide every two years in our, in the district races. But the issue is how that... I need, I need Dr. Booker here to provide me cover and give me the language that I need that politicians don't usually really use. But if you go back to, I did a lot of research getting ready for this, and if you go back to the news articles from the 19, the late 1960s, the conversation was very similar to the conversation that we're having right now, which is interesting, but they were moving from a purely at-large system to the district system that we know. And the, a lot of folks felt like they were losing their right to select the full city council, moving to the district system. And so this hybrid system is what they landed on, which would allow the district to nominate their candidates and then the full city decide. But as Dr. Booker has mentioned, and I, that could, may have had a negative impact on our elections. And the only way for us to know is if an individual brings a complaint under the Voting Rights Act against our election system, assuming that hasn't happened over the last 50 years. I was talking to some folks as I was preparing for this, who said, "You know, if, if, if the city adopts an at-large system and it goes, you know, a certain direction, I'll be ready to put my own personal resources forward to bring a lawsuit against the city." But this person is not someone who lives in the majority-minority district, it's not somebody who's a racial minority. Those who are going to be directly impacted are those in our city that are facing the disparities, that, a community that doesn't have the resources needed to bring civil rights lawsuits as often as they need to be brought. What I'm committed to and where I'm at is I want to bring, I want to put good policy forward. I don't want to put good policy, I don't want to put policy forward that could potentially disenfranchise our minority voters, but we're going to wait and see. And we're going to put it in the hands of those minority voters to have to bring that civil rights challenge against us, if that is the case. I want us to be on the front end of it, look at the 50 years of history, not think that we, Knoxville, are exceptional, that we somehow, Knoxville, do not need to have structures and considerations in place to protect our minority voters, because somehow bias and discrimination just doesn't happen in our city. That's just not the case. When I hear this conversation, to me, it's akin to, really conversations that we hear more from conservative leaders, who as soon as you see a person of color make an achievement, then, "Oh, man, we can just throw the Civil Rights Act away." You know, like, "Oh, we don't need these measures in place any longer." But we do, we do need to protect our majority-minority district. We do need to understand the, how people identify with their voting locations. Changing this to regional, changing the name of the districts to these regional names that don't line up with the districts, I think is only going to cause more confusion. It's going to break down some of the cohesion that we've seen develop within districts, and it will only serve those who hold the most power here in our city, not, not the district voters themselves. That's my main concern.
Thank you. I'll just make some comments here, if it's all right, I'll take a turn. I've talked to a lot of people, a lot of people in this room with diverse opinions, and it really has shaped my brain, and I don't feel 100% certain about any of these paths, so I'll share that. I've looked at this for a long time. We've been aware of this, as Councilwoman Ryder mentioned, for over a year, and tried to dissuade this, the trigger for this, but were unsuccessful, not necessarily under our power, but we tried in that regard. And I wish voters were, that love the way we vote now would, would be as loud in that regard as they are now. I think this proposal is, is the best foot forward, and I think for the same reasons that Councilwoman Parker just said, that she thinks her proposal is better, is because we do need guardrails, and I actually think this produces a more diverse council like you see before you now for the, for the foreseeable future. I don't think we're special, and I don't necessarily think we defy gravity, but I do think, looking at the past 60 years and looking at Knoxville now, are completely different. We're not immune to those issues, but we are different, and thank God. I thank God we look different, and thank God we think different. There are three main reasons I think that this should go before voters. One is, the voters should decide. I think because you don't see a lot of certainty, a lot of these members here should give you pause to be very certain about your opinion one way or the other. We've never been really consistently uncertain about something, I don't think I've ever seen. So I would say that voters will get a choice for what they want, and they will see the benefits and consequences of that when they get to choose this. The second thing is, I think this is the best continuation of the most modern history we have that's produced this diverse council. And I do think the modern evidence before us, a lot of which Councilwoman McKenzie listed, points to this as a priority. I do, I do think, one thing that we don't know is necessarily all the ripple effects of this decision that we didn't choose to make. But one thing I do know is that we are all, I can say with confidence, all nine of these members are intent on fair representation, a diverse council, and protection of minority populations in our community. We're just trying to make sure we're clear about what we think is the best path, and so none of us are 100% sure of that. I do think this proposal would bring us into compliance with state law. The voters have always had a say, and I think you should have a say again. I think, another thing that's been mentioned about the 6th district particularly, or district voting, you know, I don't, I want to remind everybody that the 6th district representative in front of us now got more votes than anybody else on this council in the 2021 election. So in terms of power and concentration, Glenn McKenzie has oversized power, I'm just kidding. You, you, you earned every vote, but my point is, the city at-large voted for that council member with more votes than any of the other people that were running in that race. I also want to say that there are other bodies in our community that have been listed, such as commission and school board, that I can tell you this, that's very unique to people that sit up here. It may seem like district-only voting gives you power of your district, but I can tell you that accountability of other districts makes you care a lot about other districts. If I only have to get voted for my district, I don't really, I mean, out of my good heart, and I think I mean well and want to do well, I don't really have to care a lot or answer the calls from somebody in the third district. I don't have to answer calls from a rezoning issue in the second district, because my voters don't care, or might a little, but there's no incentive or accountability. So while, I think, what was the speaker's name, Mr. Bailey, I don't know if you're still awake in here with this, but I can't see you over there or not, but I thought you brought up some very good points, but I would tell you from sitting in this seat, the way that I care about your district is because I'm accountable to you. And I think that driving force is, if I hear, if you hear anything from me tonight, it would be, there's a unique perspective of these nine people up here that have to sit and listen and weigh the voices of other peoples in other districts, and another person may not care as much as these nine might, and we're also more than care accountable to voters in the subsequent election, if we want to run again. I can think of very specific votes on this council where not only good-hearted intent was the driving force behind votes of other council members for my district, but it helped that they had to run for reelection the next year or the year after, too. And I think that matter particularly is why, if I have to choose an uncertain path, one that the state legislature has tossed onto us, or one that I think from my experience up here, mixed with my representation in the district, points toward this being a better model. And I think Knoxville's a lot different than it was 60 years ago. So while history points to the future, I think going back too far loses a bit of relevance for me, but I do agree, we need guardrails for any path. So I've manipulated the mic more than five minutes, I'm going to pass it again. Councilwoman Parker.
Well, we actually, we don't have to go back 50 years. We can go back five years. I was only elected five years ago. So if we go back five years, then you will have had no at-large elections of people of color in the city of Knoxville. Just go back five years. You don't have to go back 50, right? What I wanted to speak on was, one thing I wanted to speak on was the turnout that you talked about for District VI in 2021, because it was extraordinary and different than how other races are treated. Other races didn't have the city mayor intervene and give an endorsement. Other races didn't have articles written in the Knoxville News Sentinel about the history of the seat, the history of representation of the seat, the need to protect majority-minority There are reasons for that. And I don't want to discount Councilmember McKenzie's popularity, the love in the community, but we also have to acknowledge the other factors that are there when you have a majority-minority district that you are trying to protect. The other issue that I wanted to bring up, because I forgot to raise this earlier, is one of my concerns and reasons that I don't support this proposal is the 50% plus one rule being applied to the regional at-large races. And the reason for that, I'm just seeing this system being designed that's moving us away from treating these as district representatives and treating them more as at-large representatives. The, if you look at, if you do the research around the Voting Rights Act, one of the issues that can create a, a claim, a concern, is the impact of that 50% plus one rule in majority-minority districts. And this is not, when you're, there's, I mean, this is complicated. The Voting Rights Act is so complicated. But this is, in district races, you want to give candidates the opportunity to compete, to build their name, to not have a lot of money come into a district campaign that can win it outright in the district. There are multiple reasons that, and I didn't know this until I started doing the research, but multiple reasons why the courts have had some pause when it comes to the 50% plus one rule in, in district-level primaries, and how, what that impact is on minority-majority, majority-minority districts. So that's another issue that I would like for us to look into, but it seems like there is support for this ordinance, and it seems like it is moving forward, and I find that really unfortunate, because I hope what the voters are seeing tonight is... is that there's no clarity here. There's very little support, it seems, here at the table, what everyone, not, well, I won't say everyone, what I'm hearing from council members is, let's toss it to the voters to decide. And to me, that is a dereliction of duty, especially when we have obligations to uphold civil rights law and to understand, to spend more time on these issues than our constituents so that we can understand them and best guide them. We don't, we shouldn't put proposals forward and sit back and say, well, we'll see what the community thinks is best. We should champion issues. If we don't understand it, I would abstain. But if you're ready to champion the issue and say to the community, this is what I feel like is the next best step for our community, then support it. But putting things up and saying, I don't know if this is best, and I trust my community to make that decision, is unfortunate. Knoxville, you deserve better representation than that.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Did I just go?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not sure that what I just heard is a synthesis of what I've heard tonight, but that's all right. Apparently, the folks that came to support you do. Yeah, keep, yeah, okay. Hi, I believe that we have a representative here from MTAAS, so I'm not sure that you would be able to answer my question, or Mr. Frost, or Councilman Roberto. I believe there are 16 other cities that do what is proposed in this. What are those 16 other cities?
I'll have to pull up the list. I am Stephanie O'Hara. I am a legal consultant at MTAAS, and our address is 1610 University Avenue.
Yeah.
Let me pull up that list real quick. And they may not currently follow that system. They are all going through the same review process as you. They were all examining the system, but this is as of December of 2023, they would have had this similar system.
Sure. While we're waiting, I just want to be clear, because it said something about we're not championing this, or that, or whatever. I champion the system we have, and I went to Nashville to do that, to be clear. But state folks that do not live in Knox County made the decision that we don't get to have that, so I can't put that on the ballot for the voters. So, yeah. I didn't make it personal. I didn't make it personal, and I do not, yeah, okay. I can't hear.
Councilwoman Ryder, Mr. Johnson might have something here.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
This was provided by MTAAS, Ashland City, Bristol, Caraval, Centreville, Clinton, Linden, McEwen, Monterey, Morristown, Mossheim, New Tazewell, Oliver Springs, Red Bank, Springhill, Tazewell, and Waverly.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, could you email that to members of council? I appreciate that. That is my question for right now.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, the research that you did for me on those 16 cities, was that shared with all council members?
No, ma'am.
Could you share that with all council members, please?
Yes.
When we are looking at changing our election system, we have to look at other cities that are similarly situated. The largest city on that list of 16 has a population of 50,000, nowhere near our population. I'd have to look it up, but no one has a black population the size of ours. I don't know how concentrated, there's a whole list of things that you have to do when evaluating a city to see if they are able to have a majority-minority district. Knoxville checks all of those boxes. We have a cohesive, black community, identifiable. It checks the boxes. I can't tell you about all of those other cities, but I can tell you, based on population and based on demographics, they do not compare to Knoxville. So just lifting them up as an example means nothing. Absolutely nothing. Actually, I have one more question.
Councilwoman Parker?
We have asked for MTAAS to speak. MTAAS is here tonight. I'd like to hear from MTAAS, because I have gleaned a lot of information from the research that MTAAS itself has done on at-large voting districts. In the article that I read that MTAAS developed, it's pretty clear when a municipality should or should not consider an at-large voting system. And one thing that the MTAAS article says is that a local government should be on notice that if it has a significant minority population in identifiable pockets, an at-large election system or a combination district at large is automatically suspect. Does that language sound familiar to you?
That line, that article that you read was written by my predecessor 21 years ago. I think a lot of cities were going through similar review. He has since passed, and so I can't ask him about his intent of this article, but that is from it. That has not been reviewed by an attorney until I was asked to look at it in preparation for this meeting. So that does come from that article. And part of what MTAAS does is advise municipalities on the risks that you will assume should you proceed with a process. And we, as legal consultants, have taken the view that we will advise you of all the risks, and then usually we are the most risk averse, is the method that we recommend. So that is what this article comes from the perspective of, is the least risk for the city, especially for public funds and all the things that would be at risk if it was challenged.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's helpful.
That's all I have.
Just to follow up, I have a couple of questions. Ms. O'Hara, that article was from 21 years ago?
Yes.
And that article is about the likelihood of a municipality to be challenged by a suit based on the result of elections. Is that correct?
Correct.
And it's not a recommendation as to which voting approach produces a more diverse council or representative body. Is that true?
That is how I read it. There are lines in it that would, you would need to consider as a municipality and what could be challenged because of the risk of your municipality.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on a few other comments. I think some of the comments that were made about specific elections, actually, I think we've discussed, we've discussed probably six different elections, including Mr. Robinson's dating back to 69, and I think most recently, I think what the point I'm trying to make is, is that no election is the same. And so you can look back 60 years, you can look back five years, but no elections are the same. And we have never, as a city, I think this is really clear in terms of going back to a certain date, or going backwards or forward, it's dishonest to be certain, and I think that that is manipulation at best. I think this city will never have voted the way we are about to vote, whatever path we choose. So for anybody that says they have a crystal ball and knows exactly what's going to happen, again, I think is unfair. I also think that, I do think this is a better approach, so let me be clear about that to every voter in the city. I think that this proposal is a better way to represent districts, be accountable to everyone in the city legitimately. I can just tell you so many stories of watching other bodies in our community vote without any repercussions of other districts, about issues in that district, where to place a thing that doesn't belong, where to place a facility, whether to rezone something from this to that. There is no accountability when you have district-only races. So I do propose that this is the best path forward. I also think that it's fair to put it before the voters, which, by the way, all three of these items have to go to the voters. We cannot unilaterally make any of these decisions. So for us to sit up here and suggest that we're just going to throw it over the fence to you all, the public, without any direction or recommendation, is fanciful. With that said, Mr. Swanson, I think it was a question earlier about can this proposal and the next proposal be approved by the public together without conflict? And I think you wanted to weigh in on that.
Well, I think it's important for you to understand and recognize that the law, as it currently exists, does not allow you to submit to the voters the question of, do you want this system or that system? What you have to submit to the voters is a question that is answered yes or no when we amend our charter. And from a strictly legal point of view, not from a policy point of view, the policy is up for you all to decide. That's why people elected you. But from a legal viewpoint, I do not believe that you can responsibly adopt both the Roberto ordinance and the first part of the Parker ordinance, because they are just logically inconsistent with each other. If you submit both of those things to the voters with a yes/no question, if they both vote yes, it creates a tremendous legal dilemma. And so I don't think you could do that. So I think they are so internally inconsistent that that's not something that would be available for you to do. There are, there are portions of the Parker version of the ordinance that are not inconsistent. For example, the second provision provides that if there's a tie vote, the two top number of votes would go forward, even if that's three or four people, that would go forward. That is not inconsistent. So you could adopt that portion of it, but if you adopt the Roberto ordinance, I do not believe you could adopt the first portion of the Parker ordinance. Or if you adopt the first portion or the entire Parker ordinance, I don't think you can adopt the Roberto ordinance. Does that make sense?
It does. Okay. Any other discussion on this item? Do we have a motion on the floor?
I have a question.
Okay, we have a motion. Sorry, Councilwoman Fugit.
Sorry, I have a legal question, Mr. Swanson, based on what you said. If both were approved first reading, just asking, because somebody will wonder, if you approved both first reading, then only the one that got approved at second reading could go forward, correct?
And ordinance is adopted by two readings.
I'm just stating the obvious hypothetically. Okay.
Hypothetically?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there's a motion on Councilwoman Helsley.
I just have a question. You were talking about the tiebreaker, I know, which is jumping to the next one. I thought you said the other day that was against state law.
No, I said that it could be interpreted potentially as against state law. Since we had that meeting, I know that there has been conversation with the State Election Commissioner. The State Election Commissioner offered the opinion that that particular portion of the ordinance would not violate the statute that I referred to. So I will defer to the State Election Commissioner with regard to that issue.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion by Councilmember Roberto. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes eight to one.
12C is an ordinance of the council of the city of Knoxville to amend the Charter of the city of Knoxville, specifically Chapter 412 of the Private Acts of 1923 of the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee entitled "An Act to Incorporate the City of Knoxville and Knox County, Tennessee, and Define the Rights, Powers, and Liabilities of the Same, to Fix the Boundaries of Said Municipalities and Repeal All Acts or Parts of Acts in Conflict with this Act and All Acts Mandatory Thereto by Amending Articles, 7, Sections 707A, B, and C, so as to Set a Process for Primary and Regular Elections of Council Members Consistent with Public Chapter 391 Acts of 2023, Including Establishing the Only Voters Within a District Shall Vote in a Council-District Election Rather Than All City Voters Electing District Candidates in the Regular Election, and Establishing that At-Large Candidates May Be Elected in the Primary with a Majority of the Votes Rather Than Requiring the Election of an At-Large Candidates in the Regular Election, and Changing the Candidates Placed on the Regular Election Ballot to Candidates Receiving the Two Highest Number of Votes in the Primary Rather Than the Two Candidates with the Highest Number of Votes, and Further Providing for the Submission of this Ordinance to the Qualified Voters of the City of Knoxville for Approval as Provided in Article 11, Section 9 of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee."
Okay. Sorry, we do have four people have signed up to speak to this item. We need a motion to suspend the rules. Does the suspension still hold from the previous item, or do we need to suspend the rules for this one as well?
I think you only did it for the previous.
Yeah. We have a motion to suspend the rules to allow all four speakers to speak.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion about the move to suspension? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All four speakers will be allowed to speak. We will start with Mr. Bentley Marlowe, followed by Rick Roach, Deidre Harper, and Jacks Fox.
Bentley Marlowe, 322 Douglas 7837921. If we're going to be hell-bent on taking action to force a ballot initiative for a charter amendment, I think this would be my preferred one. This allows the districts to have their say. It allows each district to have a vested interest in participating, and hopefully that will help motivate the districts to show some more voting interest and get out to the ballot box more, because it's local then. I mean, this is somebody that you're going to know that lived down the street, around the corner, or within the 30 blocks that we heard someone talk about earlier. And I think that the concerns about keeping a cohesive view and keeping everyone that's elected from the districts involved in the city is simply that you're not motivated to take on the public scrutiny and the ridicule and all the work if you're not devoutly in love of the city. And I love Mechanicsville, but I love the whole city as a whole. It takes the whole city to make the city. I mean, if you were to just carve off the sixth district, we'd be missing out on a whole lot of good stuff. But if we take away the sixth district, we're going to be missing out on a lot of good stuff. So we're all in this. And I don't think that if, just because somebody's voted in by just one district, that they don't care about the other districts. But what, the flip side of that coin is, is that we could actually have some productive stuff done, because when everyone's beholden to the entire city and one portion of the city votes in such a greater turnout, we have ridiculous stuff like hour-long meetings about a duplex. An hours-long meetings about a duplex, a duplex that's allowed by the rules that are in place, that's fair game, they got their special use by the rules at a planning commission. But we had a torturous, hours-long discussion at this board, only because that duplex happened to be in the second district, and it happened to be that you were answering to every one of those voters. I get duplex approvals in the same manner over in Mechanicsville, the sixth district. It's often approved with no discussion here. The same can be said for duplexes in the second, I mean, the third, the fourth, the fifth, but by God, the second is special somehow. It makes no sense. And so... And so if by eliminating the second's ability to vote on everyone scares everyone so much, let's ask ourselves why? And all we have to do is go back, what was it, a month and a half, two months ago, to that duplex problem? That's what's going on here. But I don't think that if we said that, you know what, districts one through one and three and four and five and six only get to select their own individuals, I don't think that the councilperson elected in Charlie's district, District Five, is not going to be somewhat paying attention or concerned about a duplex in District Two or Six, because they care about the city as a whole, and they care about what precedent would be set. So I think that while there's some merit to it, it makes her a great little pitch piece, that it brings us all together, it makes us all accountable and all united. It also has that dirty flip side, that we have to be too accountable, and we have to sometimes endorse some torturous discussions over something as simple as a duplex, a house with just two doors. Because we have many houses all over this city that have just one door, but they've got multiple families in it. Most people don't even know that they exist. The neighbors might not even know. So what difference does it make? And that is, I think, the flip side of this argument. The flip side of the discussion is simple things like a duplex in District Two causes so much consternation when, in reality, it should just be treated like a duplex in District Six, which is routinely approved with no discussion. So I find that concern to be a bit hollow. And I think that if you just think back to like district representation, every district is like every neighborhood. They're all a little different, they're all a little unique. We need those flavors to make a really good batch of whatever we're cooking. If we're just going to throw a handful of white salt on everything, it's not going to be edible. Thank you.
Next up, Rick Roach.
Rick Roach, of course. If one person casts a ballot in District Six, and it's for you, that district has spoken. If you win, if that's the only ballot that's cast, but that's the way, that's the status of the district. Okay? That's it. So then, if you want to start asking questions about how we got to the point where only one person cast a ballot, well, then we can have that discussion, and you all will know what the real deal is. Okay? Either nobody gives a poop, or the people have been conditioned continuously over decades under this governance structure called City Council, and the administration of the mayors, and the dictates of the planning commissions, who are appointed by City Council and County Commission, the people who make the decisions about what a community looks like. So that mentality carries into the electoral process, and you only got one person voting. But you all have put those conditions in place, whether you want to admit it or not. You all have structured it that way, and you do not want to take responsibility for structuring it that way. And it gets old. You cannot tell me that you all, when you went to Nashville, or wherever it was you went, and met with these state representatives, that you came back and sounded the alarm to this community. You just didn't do it. Okay, there was a workshop, wasn't there about, wasn't there a workshop? I attended the workshop here. Of course, you know, you do your workshops at four o'clock or three o'clock in the afternoon, and nobody can come and attend those, okay? And you, there was that workshop, and the one that I remember, and you had people from Nashville come, Metro Nashville come, and talk about the problems of dealing with the state legislature, and how the state legislature was taking over, and all this other stuff. Man, it's hard to keep up with this, you know, it's really hard to keep up. And every one of you were sounding the alarm about state government taking over the responsibilities of the local governance system. Every one of you that was in attendance. So you can't act like, when you see negative results locally in East Knoxville, Mechanicsville, Monestelle, okay, you can't act like you have nothing to do with it. You do. Because the decisions that you make and that you support, if you got to go and sue or be sued by the state, or you sue the state, or whatever that process entails, stand up for the people that you say you represent. And in this case, you know, the non-voting community, you still represent them. Whether it's the district system or not, but the district system puts the responsibility directly within that district, and then you work on the conditions that will get those people to respond and be responsible by doing the first thing that they are literally required to do, and that's to vote. So we got people registered to vote, but we don't vote, because they don't think it matters. They really don't. Because they think you all jerry-rig everything. Excuse me, that's kind of ethnically, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'll take that back. But it's a rigged system, and you all know it, so quit playing games.
Deidre Harper?
Deidre Harper, Knoxville, 37917, in support of Councilwoman Amelia Parker's charter amendment proposal. And I've been hearing the conversations around that we've been having with what was presented before us, and that we've been unsure, we don't know, there's no right thing. But what is mind-boggling to me is that many of you who have said that have signed off already on Roberto's proposal before we even had discussion. And sometimes that is a disadvantage, I feel, because you don't, to me, you've already made a stance, but then you come on council, and then you say how you're unsure, or that you're unaware, and that you want to leave it up to voters to determine what is best. And I wonder how many of you have had conversations with your district before this particular conversation that's being had today? I think that would have been important. And I'm going to say that, and I wish Reverend Middlebrook was here, you know, in response to the NAACP, because we oftentimes look to those particular organizations to sign off on what the Black community needs and what the Black community feels, but they've not done their due diligence in speaking to the Black community on what we think and how we feel. So I guess I'm saying that, too, to think about that sometimes before going to these particular organizations and looking to them to give you a check, meaning, okay, and that this is what we say, this is what is approved, and this is what we want to move forward, because that's not always true. Because a lot of people in the city, in this community, and specifically District Six, have differences of opinions, and I would have appreciated if the organization that's going to stand up and say, that's what I need, that's what I deserve as a member of District Six, that I would have been asked about it before writing a letter to say this is what it is. So I would like you all to think about that moving forward, when you look to these organizations to sign off on. And Councilmember Tommy, I know you mentioned about being district-specific does not give you an opportunity to focus on the district at large or the city at large, but I find that hard to believe, and I maybe, I don't want to know, I don't want to call it lazy politics, but I don't think that that's fair to say, just because you're a district representative, that you shouldn't be concerned about the city as a whole. Because when you make your vote, your vote is going to determine the output as a city as a whole. So if you're going to sit up there and say that, well, I'm just a district representative, and I'm only going to focus on my district, I think that's an injustice to the city, because you don't only vote for just your district. And I don't think that going citywide is going to hold you accountable to do that, because if you can't have morals within yourself to realize that you, as a representative for a district, is also representative of a city, I don't think that changing the charter is going to make you do that, because that's going to have to come from within you before somebody can mandate that. So to use that as an excuse, or to use that as a reason why we should go to citywide elections, I just think it doesn't hold substance, and I don't think that it's a fair thing to say. And then the last thing that I wanted to say is, when I went to the workshop, I did attend the workshop, and I actually left the workshop still confused. I left the workshop still not knowing what we were talking about, because under Roberto's proposal, it was almost presented as if we are just renaming the districts for clarification. But when I got to thinking about it a little bit more, it was to really change the way that we are voting as a district, and we're going to citywide elections. So I don't know if that was just on me that sat here for the whole time and maybe misunderstood what was going on, but I think maybe we're masking this as to be approved as renaming to regionals, so that make it easier for conversation when talking to county members, when actuality, we are really changing the way we are doing our voting. So I think it's masking what we're really, what you're really trying to put forward, and it's not being intentional and being upfront and honest about the conversation that we are really having today. So at the end of the day, I do support Councilwoman Amelia Parker's proposal, and I think it's an injustice that we are not able to support both. There's nobody that signed off on her proposal, but we sit up here and say that we're confused, and we don't know what's best, but we all signed off on one particular one, and it makes it hard for me to believe that you all are genuine in what you're saying. And I don't think you understand that, so our people have questions, and we come up here, and we're infuriated, we're inferior, and we're not inferior, we're infuriated about the conversations that are having, because it seems like you're lying to us, and you're really not being honest about how you really feel. So I give my time.
Next up, Jax Fox. Is Jax Fox still here?
Anytime.
Okay. That's the only speakers we have signed up for this item. Councilwoman Parker, if you could introduce this ordinance to get us started.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I believe, as you all know, I'll actually tell a little bit of background, since I have a little bit of time. But looking into our, how we conduct elections in Knoxville has been an interest of mine for a long time. Obviously, I was a part of a movement called the City Council Movement that formed because we saw barriers to individuals accessing, being able to be elected to office. People were intimidated by the need to run citywide, even though they were a well-respected leader in their community. People were intimidated by the fact that the city hadn't elected much diversity in its past, except if you come from the sixth district. That became almost a rule in our city. But beyond that, people were not willing to believe that even more diversity was possible. And we didn't just go in and say, oh, yeah, everything's changed in Knoxville, a whole new mentality has been adopted, and left people on their own to run for office, and they just happened to be successful. No. We've done amazing amounts of fundraising, building the infrastructure, training individuals on how to help candidates running for office, all of these things that none of us were doing before. All of us have full-time jobs, but it was something that was important to us, because we saw how it was impacting our communities, for our representatives to feel more accountable to the wealthier parts of our city than they feel accountable to the parts of our city that have low voter turnout. And so we wanted to get more diverse people, but we also wanted to increase voter turnout to hold people accountable. When we formed the City Council Movement and began running individuals for election, we also had conversations and hosted people's assemblies to talk about how our elections are structured and what might be a more democratic process. We actually have been engaging in these conversations since at least 2018, probably And of course, there were lots of ideas that came out of those discussions, a lot of folks who leaned towards the ranked choice voting type system. And then we had a new state law adopted that outlawed ranked choice voting in our state. So that was not a conversation that we could continue or continue to explore. But I still wanted to make improvements to our elections and to other parts of our charter, and that's why I brought a charter amendment, multiple charter amendments before this body two years ago. And at the time, when those charter amendment proposals were unsuccessful, I asked for a workshop to discuss the charter review process. And that request for a workshop has gone to all of us on City Council to vote on and prioritize for the last two years. So there are many a people in our community who have been thinking about our elections, trying to improve them, engaged in these issues for the last several years, while some folks have come to a very quick conclusion in the last month, it seems. I find that very unfortunate. But we are where we are. We're in a place that none of us like to be in. I'm a little bit more comfortable, maybe because I have been considering these changes, and for me, a long time ago, made the decision that district-only primaries and general elections for district representatives would be best for our local democracy. So that's just where my opinion lies. I want to support a compromise, if we can find one. And while I may not agree that we should move to a regional-at-large system, I'm still in support of the improvements that are contained in my ordinance, even without changing to Just to clarify, my ordinance serves three purposes. The first part that was mentioned by Mr. Swanson is the part that aligns with state law and moves us to district-only elections for district representatives. The second part, which was briefly mentioned, includes language that would prevent a tie in a primary in the city, in all city elections, mayor, judge, city council. And then by state law, we would still be able, in the general election, as a city council, in the case of a tie, either select a winner or decide to send the race, to send the election to a runoff, which obviously would be my preference. But in a primary, there is no time for a runoff, the only option is for city council to choose that winner, but this is an easy fix, really, of moving a few words around that remove that possibility from our elections. of moving a few words around that remove that possibility from our elections. The third issue, which has come up multiple times, is allowing at-large races to win in the primary with 50% plus one in the vote. With the adoption of the changes to the 5th District and moving the 5th District to the year with all other district races, that leaves the at-large seats, A, B, C, mayor and judge in the same year. And currently, mayor and judge are both able to win in the primary with 50% plus one in the vote, but at-large seats are not. And so we could have a situation where we see the same voters showing up to vote in all of those races. They're, they're, they vote, you know, a majority for mayor, a majority for judge, and a majority for at-large. Similar outcomes in all races. And the mayor and judge race would finish in the primary, but the at-large races would have to continue on.
Councilwoman, you're, you're just out of time. Would you, you want to come back or?
Oh, yeah, sure, I can come back.
Or you want to finish up quickly? Your call.
Well, what I was going to say is actually, I'm, just in my introduction is, there are those three parts. And what I would like to do is make a motion that what we are considering now are the, the last two parts. And that I would recommend an amendment. You can look on packet page 850. And we would amend that section by removing the language after manner of holding elections be amended so as to. We would take out all language after set, set a process, up to a just, a council district election and.
All right, if it's okay, we'll pause just for a second and see if there's any discussion on the original proposal before we go into the amendment. Councilwoman McKenzie.
So Councilmember Parker, if I understand you correctly, you're saying that only the at-large candidates could have a 50% plus one, but not the district representative?
Yes.
Could you expand a little bit on why you chose to leave the district rep out with the 50% plus one?
The research that I did suggested that, especially in cities like ours that have a majority-minority district, that a 50% plus one opportunity makes those less competitive races at the district level. Additionally, my reasoning for changing the at-large race is because that 50% plus one is available for the mayor and judge race that takes place in the same year. And so the rules will be the same for all elections happening in that year. And the 50% plus one rule for district races has not been raised at City Council yet. So it was not an issue that I felt passionately about, that I felt like needed to be raised. Felt the at-large position has been raised enough that we, it should at least be included for discussion. I'm not completely tied to it. I would probably lean towards wanting to remove that rule for all races. But I can see it both ways because we, when we've had less competitive races, you know, it doesn't make sense, even like in the, it doesn't make sense for a, a race to continue on to the general when there's, you know, the, the mayor and judge have been resolved by the same voters who are being asked to resolve the next race. Do you know what I mean? In the district races, I was proposing district only. So those would be a different set of voters than the full citywide voters who are voting for at-large mayor and judge.
Okay, I follow you on that one. And so I think what I hear you say is that you want to propose this as a standalone, whether if Councilmember Roberto's gets passed on a second, you want this to still be a standalone that could be on the ballot to accompany what the state law is now, which would be district only. So either way, whichever it shakes out with the voters, this would be standalone.
Yes, and for me, I think it would be more clear for voters if we are saying to them, you make the choice at the ballot to either take us to an at-large system or a district-only system. If we take the language out about the district-only system, it will not conflict with Roberto's, so either can be chosen. But it would still take us to a district-only system if voters do not select Roberto's proposal.
Okay.
Counsel, we need to, yes, Councilwoman Fugit.
I'd like if we could take a little bit of time for the attorneys to look at that and parse that in a way. But we don't even have a motion. But well, we have Ms. Parker's motion, I guess, to approve it as is. So is it a substitute motion?
We need a motion in a second on the original proposal in order to make an amendment. So.
Or is it a substitute motion?
We have an original motion in a second. So Councilwoman Parker, you've made the motion on the original amendment? Excuse me, the original ordinance?
Okay, yeah.
Correct? We need a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilwoman McKenzie. Now, we can introduce the amendment. Unless, Councilwoman Fugit, you still want the attorneys to? Okay, Councilwoman Parker, would you please readdress the amendment that you're proposing?
Okay, so the amendment, you want me to read what the language would say if the other language is removed? Okay. Shall Article 7, Section 707 of the Charter of the City of Knoxville entitled "Manner of Holding Elections" be amended so as to establish that at-large candidates may be elected? Sorry.
So as to establish?
Yeah. And then I would read the rest of that.
So as to establish that at-large candidates may be elected in the, okay.
And that's the one change striking those four and a half lines?
Yes, and I can make an edit also to the text in the ordinance, but that text might conflict with Roberto's text.
Can I just ask a point of order?
Yes.
What page are we talking about on the agenda? Because 850 on mine is not any of this language. So I'm trying to follow along and I'm not sure where we are. Are we in the language that's the question? Okay, so if we change the language in the question, do we not also have to change the language in the ordinance? Okay, okay, I'm just making sure I'm following it. So we're actually on page 849 if we're doing the question.
Well, if you bring it all the way to the top, it says 850, it switches. So like if any part of that page 849 shows on your screen, it says 849.
I got it. Now I'm following you, all right. Councilmember Parker, I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out where we were. Could you read what your changes were? I guess you're in that second paragraph where it says shall Article 7, Section 707? Okay, where, where are we there so I can follow along?
Section 707 of the Charter of the City of Knoxville entitled "Manner of Holding Elections Be Amended So As To", and then I dropped down about four sentences, four lines, to establish, be amended so as to establish that at-large candidates may be elected in the primary with a majority of the votes. Does that make sense?
So if, just talking about that one. So if Councilmember Roberto's proposal passes on second reading and this one passes on first and second reading, I mean, it's a little redundant because you're both saying at-large candidates elected with 50% plus one, right?
The original, yeah, I think 12B had that in it, so I don't.
It's a little redundant, but it is a conflict.
This would allow for two options, right? So if you want the at-large system, you vote for Roberto's and that gives you the at-large system and the 50% plus one for at-large races. But if you want the district-only option, if we don't include this in my ordinance, that will not be adopted after the vote in November. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, it does to me. Since I'm at-large, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, go for it.
So I, I think what Councilmember Parker is saying, because this body has talked about it numerous times, that the three at-large seats cannot win the, in the primary, regardless of how we vote. We cannot win in the primary like the mayor and the judge can. So I believe what this ordinance is becoming, and if I'm speaking, I'm sure I'll be corrected, but the way I'm interpreting this is that this is an ordinance that just deals with city council at-large being able to win with 50% plus one, just like the mayor and the judge. And it deals with how you settle a tie. So that in the event, if the other proposal does not pass, we do not have to wait another two or more years to settle the city council at-large question, which has been talked about four years. So I think that's, so I understand how y'all can think it's in conflict. And I get that it might be in conflict. But I think it's an opportunity to preserve fixing like, like Councilwoman Thomas is doing, that if the, if the other doesn't fit, then, then we move to where the fifth, where the 5th District votes. I mean, it comes up on the election cycle. That's kind of what I think I'm saying. And again, it's late, we haven't even had a recess. So I might be confused, but I think that's what you were going for.
Perfect, yep. No, I think it was perfect.
Councilwoman Parker, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay. I have a question about the item around the runoff. It's my understanding that, according to your proposal, that if there's a tie between first and second. Yeah, yeah, if there's a tie between first and second places, that the third place would come along too, to the runoff. If there's a tie between first, I guess what I'm saying is if there's a tie between first and second, or second and third. Because you're talking about two, top two, so you could have, scenario one is candidate A gets 100, candidate, candidate B gets 100 votes and candidate C gets 50. In all, in that scenario, all three go to the runoff, correct? Similarly, if candidate A gets 100 and candidate B gets 50 and candidate C gets 50, 50, all three go forward again. Because there's a tie and it's the top two vote counts, right? So you could potentially have two different outcomes or two different tie for first and second, or a tie between second and third. But in both scenarios, all three candidates would go forward. Am I understanding that right? Yes, into the general, yeah?
I, I believe so, yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Helsley.
First and second, so you're saying you're going to drag a third person that only got 50 votes into a runoff with two that got 100 apiece? Is that what you just said? You agreed with that?
The top two vote totals would go on to the.
The top two vote totals would be the two that tied at 100, not the one that's down here at 50.
No, it would be.
That's what it is now.
One, 100 is one vote total, 50 is another vote total. If, if multiple people get the same vote total, that's still one vote total. Does that make sense?
I mean, I get it, but I, I get it, but I don't know why, I don't understand how that would be equitable to anybody, I mean, to. I get the one about the, the second place tie, I understand that. But the first place tie and then dragging somebody, I mean, I don't really care, I guess, but it seems weird or different.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
If, if we go forward with three people, is, when you go to the general election, does there have to be a 51%? Or do they win with a, with a plurality?
Well, we would, we would look to our charter for that, right? I'm not changing any of that.
I haven't researched it, so I don't know what our charter says, to tell you the truth.
I don't know what the exact language says either, but I imagine they, they win with the majority of the vote.
Alls I'm trying to do is, is make sure that there is some way that we resolve whether it gets, it gets finalized by a plurality or whether that person's got to have a majority, which will, then, if they've got to have a majority, then you got, they have one more vote.
I believe that our charter says they have to have a majority of the vote. But we could double check.
All right, we have an amendment on the table. Is there a second? Do we have a second on the amendment? We have a, a motion on the amendment. Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
Councilwoman McKenzie seconded, okay. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Roberto.
I think that, I, I understand what Councilmember Parker's doing. And the, the issues with district-only races, if you strike all of what you wanted to, what you talked about striking, would, would not be there for me anymore. So that's, that's a big improvement. Because going from getting to vote for nine people down to four, I just can't vote for that. So if that struck, then, then I can see, I can see where you're trying to go. And you're trying to address, you know, the tie situation. I guess the thing that I really have concern about is we're talking about doing a charter change and we're making changes to something on the fly. And we just got a discussion about, hey, let's maybe take a break. I, I don't know that I'm comfortable doing it right now. I don't know why we don't, we've got time. Why don't we postpone it and then have the attorneys get by this? And it gives Councilmember Parker a fair amount of time to make the amendments and then publicize it. Because nobody has seen what we're talking about. It's, it's one thing when we're making something on the fly that isn't going to the voters. I just, I just have a hard time being comfortable doing it. And there is time, there is time. We can postpone it for two weeks and come back and get reorganized and, and look at it then. That's my suggestion.
Mr. Frost.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I looked in the charter under sections for district and at-large members of council. It says the candidate from each district receiving the most votes shall be declared elected. It says the candidate from each district receiving the most votes shall be declared elected.
Councilmember Parker.
Oh.
Councilmember Ryder.
So page eight fifty has the section. Page eight fifty has the section that just got offered up for an amendment. And that pertains to the fifty percent majority for at-large seats. Where is the language, what page is it on, that would appear on the ballot about the runoff for ties? The bottom in that paragraph? Oh, okay, it's in the same paragraph, okay.
The part the candidates receiving the two highest.
Okay. I guess, I'm with Councilwoman Helsley, I don't understand if you have two candidates, if you have however number of candidates on the ballot in the primary, and first place gets a hundred votes and second place gets a hundred votes, I don't understand why you'd send. I do like the word drag, and I'm sorry that I laughed, that's hilarious. I pull along, thank you. I don't understand why third goes on, because one hundred votes, one hundred votes, the general election, that is the point of that, is to break the tie between those two. And Councilwoman Parker, you brought this forward in 2020, I believe, and that was the issue that we came up with then, and that's why it didn't get put on the ballot then. And so now we're looking at the same language? Is it the same language?
I don't remember that issue being brought up. Can you remind me?
Well, because there was confusion as to who all would go on the ballot, and so there was conversation about vetting it further, so neither here nor there. I have no problem with the voters deciding a tie. There was nothing fun about the situation that happened last time. And so I just don't, a tie for first place is the top-two vote-getters? And so my thing would be, the language just needs to be cleared up, that if it's a tie that makes it unclear of who the top-two vote-getters are, that you don't need to send three people, one first and second tie.
Councilwoman Singh.
Thank you. I'm not feeling ready to vote on this, because it feels like we're still trying to figure it out. I do, I have no problems with looking at it again in two weeks. But where are we in procedure right now, what's on the floor?
I don't think there's been an official motion to postpone, but right now we have a first and second on the amendment. We don't have to. If someone wants to make a motion to postpone, it supersedes the amendment. Okay, we have a motion to postpone for two weeks, seconded. Any discussion on the postponement? Councilmember Parker.
You know, part of me doesn't mind postponing it, but part of me is concerned that this is just political games. And that concerns me, because we were able to amend Charlie's ordinance just a minute ago, and that wasn't an issue. And there are other parts of that ordinance that I have concerns about, but I tried to be a good team player and I didn't complain. Now we're being nitpicky with mine, and this language has been before council for the last two years.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, well, I'm not playing a political game, I promise you. And a lot of what I hear appeals to me. Councilperson Fugatz's kind of issue that she's been kind of trying to bring forward a long time, I thought is very well-thought-out. It just doesn't make sense, the fifty percent for the mayor and not for the, it's illogical, like I would say my fifth district issue is too. And we've been needed to clean that up, and I'm for cleaning that up. The issue about the top vote-getters, you know, going on to the general, yeah, I get that too. I do have some of the same concerns that Councilperson Helsley did and Councilperson Ryder did. As I understand sending the top two on, or if there's a tie for the bottom slot, I get that too. But if there's a tie for the top two slots, I don't get sending the third vote-getter on to the general. But anyway, that's what we need to talk about, I think, and there's just questions. I'd like to get this vetted through the Law Department and make sure we've got something that the Law Department feels comfortable with. I'm not in opposition to either one of these ideas, I just, my position is I would feel more comfortable if we did take a little bit more time and got it vetted through the Law Department and we really got the language cleaned up the way we wanted to present it. And we can still do it on second reading, but that's just my perspective on it.
And I'm fine with that. And I'm sorry you haven't called on me.
Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, thank you. I mean, at this point, I want to forward you the whole email conversation, because I was in conversation with the Law Department two years ago over this for like a month, longer than this process has gone for these other charter amendments. It has been thoroughly vetted. I apologize that there are questions being raised right now that you do not have adequate answers to. And I hope that everyone is being sincere currently. And if so, then I definitely support a postponement so that we can clear up this language. But in my view, it's just one line to cut, to clean this up. And so, that's where I'm at.
Councilwoman Singh.
Thank you. I wasn't sure where Charlie was going, getting really tired. I wasn't sure if you were saying you'd rather not postpone, I'm very comfortable pulling my postponement and voting on this tonight.
I was inclined to postpone it, for the reasons you were talking about. And then I kind of added that, which you may have kind of lost me there, because we're all tired. But I was saying, I've got a lot of camaraderie with Councilperson Fugatz's idea about making the fifty percent thing across the board. And then the idea that Councilperson Parker has about the runoff election. I'm sympathetic to both of those, so this is not in opposition. I just wonder if we might need a little bit more time to get it vetted and all that. If my council people disagree with me, that's okay too. But I guess I'm inclined to take a little bit more time and just make sure we get it clean and packaged before, in two weeks, and we can do it then. But I'm open to other ideas.
So which way are you landing?
I prefer, I prefer to postpone it. And I seconded your motion.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the postponement? Councilwoman Ryder.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I sincerely support sending something to the voters to vote on about tie breaks. I'm very sincere about it. I'm not playing political games. I just want language that clarifies first and second being tied for first. Thank you for letting me clarify what I meant. I support you in that, and I will support the postponement to get the language correct.
Any other discussion around the postponement? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes to postpone. Do you want to take a break? All right, everybody that's been here a long time, thank you, but we're going to take a five-minute recess. All right, council, we'll get started again. Mr. Johnson?
Twelve G is an ordinance approving the request of Scott Smith for an amendment to the Southwest County Sector Plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential for property located at zero and 1476 Lyonsman Road and at zero South North Shore Drive, leaving the public parks and refuges classification and all special-purpose land use classifications unchanged, second district.
Councilmembers, we have three people speak in favor of the item and one to speak opposed. First up is Benjamin Mullins. Mr. Mullins, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak to council.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Smith. Ben Mullins, five fifty West Main Street. I'd like to thank everybody for their patience tonight and waiting on us to get here, and especially the audience behind me. I know they're not here in favor of what I'm asking for, but I do appreciate that they're here and have concerns and have waited this long. This property is by raw acreage, fifteen acres, but if you look at what the actual envelope of development potential is there, it's actually significantly smaller. There's only about five acres that's above the summer pool level of the Tennessee River, it's eight thirteen contour line. The TVA flow easement actually extends to the eight twenty-two contour line. And there's a sixty-foot riparian buffer that is actually measured from the summer pool level. And then you also have the hundred-year floodway zone and the five-hundred-year floodway zone. And all of those things really restrict what can be developed without going through extraordinary efforts to get special permissions through different organizations, Knox County, the City of Knoxville Engineering, and TVA and TDEC and the like. So the actual development acreage of this property is about one point seven acres. And that's important, because I've looked at their website in opposition, I've seen the templates of emails, I'm sure there's three different templates that they have. And all of them mention that, you know, there's seventy-two townhomes can go on here, and that's just not accurate. And I want to make sure I dispel that right off the bat. In the city, the density is really a function of the dimensional designs guidelines and other environmental constraints. And so what we're looking at is about one point seven acres that could reasonably be developed. The requests, there's three requests here, and they're hard to divorce, the zoning from the sector plan and the one-year-plan amendment. The reason we are asking for the sector plan to MDR is it's the only sector plan that would allow the RN three zoning. The RN three zoning is requested not to try to increase any density, but to allow different housing types. RN three is the first zone that would allow there to be a townhome development. And given the location of this property, it's kind of out on an island, it's on really a peninsula in the city, on Lyonsman, it's the last piece of zoning in the city on Lyonsman. Everything south and west of there is in the county. It's right across the cove from Lake Shore Park. It's a hundred and eighty-five feet to a RN five zoning development, the West Chase condominiums there across South North Shore Drive. So we think this is kind of a unique opportunity to kind of create a pocket townhome development in close proximity to Lake Shore Park. Justifications for the plan amendments, you know, there's essentially three of them. The changing conditions, one, we know that Knoxville is facing unprecedented housing crisis and influx of population. We've just crossed, you know, Knox County as a whole just crossed five hundred thousand. The population count of five hundred thousand for the first time that we know of. And so there is a need for housing, and we know this city council has prioritized trying to diversify different housing stock and allowing townhomes and that middle-form housing speaks to that policy that this council has been trying to prioritize and encourage for the past couple of years. Also, and this was not addressed in staff's report per se, but there's been a reinvestment in Lake Shore Park. I mean, a multimillion-dollar investment in Lake Shore Park, which, you know, really has invested and reinvigorated that lake shore, which is a crown jewel park. I mean, it's for both the city and the county. And having an ability for maybe a different housing type, not everybody wants to live on a ten thousand-square-foot lot and maintain a yard. Some people would like to live close to amenities such as a park like Lake Shore, and, you know, live in attached housing, live in a townhome community that is smaller and easier to maintain and be a five-minute drive from Lake Shore Park instead of a thirty-minute drive. And so those reasons, we think this piece of property is unique in its consideration and appropriate for the RN three zoning, especially considering that the closest residential zone in the city to this property is RN five and already attached housing. So there's very much some similarities there. We did try to work with the neighborhood on this, and I know they have sincere concerns, but we think that, you know, that this is more appropriate, because it is such a small development potential. We're not talking about seventy-two units, we're talking about at most ten to twenty units, and I really doubt with the environmental constraints we can even get there. This is a special, if RN three is a special-use application, which means if it is approved and we do do townhomes, that would go back to Planning Commission for review as to that specific plan and any environmental concerns, and it could potentially come here to city council if that's on appeal. So there'd be a chance to look at this again. The zoning doesn't add any traffic, it doesn't create any environmental concerns, it just gives us permission to ask and try to plan for something that would be intentional.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next up is Logan Higgins.
Good evening, Logan Higgins, one thirty-three South Gay Street. So as most of y'all probably know, I'm on Planning Commission, I don't come here tonight as a planning commissioner. I'm a licensed architect and work mostly in the city of Knoxville. And the reason I'm here is, the other day, just this week, Scott called and said, you know, that he had been working on this and had been, people had been asking how many units he would be putting on here, and his answer has been, you know, he doesn't know how many, or I guess how many units he could put here, and he doesn't know, he had no idea. So he was calling me because he knows that I very, I know the city zoning code very well inside and out, and could probably speak to how many units he could put and give him an answer that he could use to communicate. But what that conversation turned into was me explaining all of the hurdles that he's going to have to go through to actually do the project here, and all the ways that this site will naturally limit the possible density. And so after that conversation, and I'll get into some of that in a second, but just from that quick phone call, you know, I offered to come and speak to that. Had no idea what I was getting myself into tonight, but it's been very exciting to watch everything that's gone on tonight. But specifically talking about this site and why I think that it really makes sense to approve not only the, well, all three requests, and those lead up to zoning. The, when doing townhouses, he's going to have to, like Ben mentioned, cluster everything together. There's going to be parking requirements. With townhouses, parking lots are going to have to start twenty-five feet at least from the road. And that's not even just the front setback, that's just how far parking lots have to be set back from the front property line in the city. From there, you know, he could have the building, but he's still going to have rear setbacks on parcels. There's very small slither of land that is actually buildable on this because of that. Those setbacks would end up putting everything into the floodway way too far into the floodway, if he tried to max this out with townhouses. There's also requirements with townhouses for not only the square footage density, but also the lot width requirements per dwelling unit. And then I also mentioned to him, you know, you're going to have to go back for a use-on-review with this. So whatever you do end up designing, whenever you get to that point, is still going to have to go back through the public process. So I do think that there's a lot of restrictions in play, and, you know, with zoning, we can't, it's supposed to be a consideration of the site and the context, and does this make sense here? I think it absolutely does, being on a major road and near a park. But I will, I'll say also that, as it is right now, if he were to take it and subdivide it to do single-family houses, the size of what's there would allow for about seventy single houses. If they were to just chop it up and, you know, do flag lots, it could be done. That's seventy driveways potentially, that could be hitting that road as is, current zoning, just current zoning. With townhouses. With townhouses, they're not going to be doing that. They can't parcel off for townhouses because townhouses have to be at least a group of three, and it wouldn't really make sense with the setbacks to continue to parcel off more. So it will stay all one parcel and have one central driveway that would, you know, everything would access. So I say that to say, I do think that doing townhouses, there're going to be actually fewer units than what they could potentially theoretically do under the current zoning. It will just allow for a much more efficient and effective layout and use of the land. So that's why I volunteered to come and speak in support of this. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Scott Smith.
Scott Smith, 1476 Lions Bend Road. I'll be very brief. It's been a long night. I just want to emphasize a couple of quick things. I think we can do an incredibly nice, high-quality development here, very small, limited to no more than 20 units of townhomes. This property is one mile from Kingston Pike, 700 feet from North Shore Drive, and has a beautiful cove that surrounds this peninsula. I would commit that if we were approved, we'll work with staff and the neighbors. We'll come up with a plan that everybody's satisfied with and move forward. I'll reserve the rest of my time in case there's questions.
Thank you. One person has signed up to speak in opposition is Wayne Klein.
Thank you. We lost a lot of our folks tonight, particularly the older ones. But those who came in opposition, please stand. My name is Wayne Klein, attorney, the law firm of Hodge, Stodden, and Carson, 445 South Gay Street, here on behalf of Westminster Ridge Homeowners Association and a lot of the homeowners out on the Lions Bend Peninsula. I have to vehemently disagree with Mr. Logan Higgins about the number of units out there. But what you're really going to vote on tonight is whether you're going to change the sector plan, you're going to have a one-year plan amendment, and you're going to rezone to a medium density. It's not about townhouses. It's about the density. You all know that once it's rezoned, Mr. Smith can do whatever he wants with it. He can sell it. Somebody can come in, and then they have a medium density to go, to develop in. In this case, the applicant's property is at the mouth of where the Fourth Creek enters the Tennessee River. Much of the 15 total acres Mr. Smith's proposing to rezone is in a floodway or a floodplain. It's shown in your packet. Only approximately two to five acres is developable, and the environmental consequences of rezoning the entire 15-acre parcel to medium-density residential or RN3 are obvious. Pollution and runoff into the Tennessee River would have a significant detrimental impact to the downstream neighbors and the peninsula as a whole. The West City Sector Plan includes a substantial portion of Fourth Creek, which flows through and constitutes much of this property. In the hydrology section of the West City Sector Plan, Fourth Creek is identified as the most prone to flooding, as it drains a large portion of the center of the sector, the West City Sector. Those conditions do not support denser residential development at this location. Right now, it's zoned RN1, low-density residential. While I'm referencing location and classification criteria, the location criteria for a middle, a medium-density residential land use includes being in a transitional area between commercial development and low-density residential neighborhoods and being along or near corridors that are served by transit and sidewalks. None of those conditions are present at the applicant's property. To allow a sector plan amendment and a one-year plan amendment, both of which are needed before any rezoning takes place, substantial changed conditions must be present. Substantially changed conditions were analyzed by Knox County Planning Staff, and you have it all in your packet. The introduction of significant new roads or utilities that were not anticipated in the plan and that make the applicant's development more feasible don't exist. Let me talk about traffic for a minute, and then we can move on to more other changing conditions. We all know North Shore Drive is a state highway. It's controlled by TDOT, and who controls its level of service? The Knoxville Regional Transportation Planning Organization examined the North Shore Drive corridor study in 2021, as is shown in your packet. The current level of service for northbound traffic on Lions Bend Road is rated E, which means there is an unstable traffic flow with future growth, such as this proposed development. The level of service is expected to deteriorate to a level F with a dense growth, such as a medium residential upzoned development. No signal at the intersection of Lions Bend with North Shore is either slated or funded. Now, I know, and you all know, that traffic is a problem throughout the city, but that doesn't mean you should throw caution to the wind and allow maximum traffic to be generated from a product, from this project by increasing the density of residential density from low to mid-density. Road conditions simply do not support the requested sector plan amendment to intensify the land use classification at this site. Other potential substantially changed conditions that would warrant land use plan changes by a sector plan amendment include an obvious and significant error or omission in the sector or the plan. That doesn't exist. Changes in government policy, that doesn't exist. Trends in development? While the city has been experiencing an overall increase in population and housing demand, the traffic and environmental conditions around this particular property do not warrant reconsideration of an upzone or from LDR to MDR.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
I'm not finished.
Your time is up. I'm sorry. I understand. Excuse me, excuse me. Sorry.
I'm going to make a-
Excuse me. Order in the crowd, please.
I'm going to make a motion. There's only one speaker who's signed up for the speaking against. Mr. Klein, could you wrap it up in another two minutes?
I'll do my best.
All right.
A motion by Councilmember Roberto.
Seconded by Councilmember Thomas. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say
aye. Any opposed? Please proceed.
Thank you very much. The criteria for amending the one-year plan are the same as for amending the sector plan. I suggest to council, Mr. Smith has less burdensome alternatives that might let him increase the number of dwelling units in an R1 zone, which is where he's at right now, without opening the door to excessive development. In the opinion of one of my clients, Mr. Smith is swinging for the fences instead of pursuing reasonable alternatives or seeking a reasonable compromise, which is what we tried to do for the past several weeks. It just didn't work. Mr. Smith's argument that the Lake Shore Park improvements invite this kind of density and development because residents would frequent the park is disingenuous. It fails to consider the important traffic, environmental, and land use consequences of granting his application. City Council has taken great efforts in recent years to protect and preserve green spaces. A project with this many potential townhomes, a medium-density rezoning, and the resulting environmental and traffic impacts would be a step backwards. We asked, we asked ourselves how many units because Mr. Smith wouldn't tell us. We didn't hear from Logan till tonight. You know, there's 21 single-family residences he can build right now, 21. And it's not individual driveways. He can have a loop driveway. In an RN3 zone, he can build with that, that new density, 71 townhomes on 15 acres. Now, he can't build on all those, but that just increases the number of townhomes to an untenable number. Considering the existing West City Sector Plan, the existing city one-year plan, and the present zoning, changing each of those to allow a medium-density residential zoning for a townhouse development without meeting any of the criteria for such a change is tantamount to what we call spot zoning, and that is illegal. Spot zoning, a spot zoning ordinance singles out a parcel of land within the limits of a used district and marks it off into a separate district, thereby permitting a use, that parcel is inconsistent with the use permitted in the rest of that district.
That's Tom. Thank you, Mr. Klein.
We'd ask you to deny this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberto.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate everybody's patience in waiting through a long meeting and for your item to be called up. In, in that vein, since these three items, 12G, H, and I are all dealing with the same thing, I'd like to make a motion to combine all items 12G, H, and I into one.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Roberto.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So just so everybody knows, all we just did was, there were going to be three separate votes. We're going to take one vote. And my first question is for Director Brooks. Director Brooks' staff made a recommendation on this. What was that recommendation? Are none of them working up there?
There we go. Sorry about that. My microphone was working. Amy Brooks, Knox-Knox County Planning. Yes, to answer your question, planning staff did not recommend approval.
Okay. And when I went through the report, and I want to emphasize again that North Shore is a state route. It's not a city route. City doesn't control it. It said that the traffic level was unstable, that it was deteriorating or expected to deteriorate. A signal is recommended but not yet slated, and it'd be great if we could get that signal because I think that would help. It further, it said, "Current road conditions do not support the request sector plan amendment to intensify the land use from LDR to MDR," which is low-density residential to medium-density residential. "There's no change that pertains to the increasing residential intensity around the subject property. The conditions around the subject property do not warrant reconsideration of the land use classification." Fourth Creek is identified as a most prone to flooding, at a drainage or larger portion of the center of the sector, and does not support denser residential development. And there's no transition area between commercial development, low-density residential neighborhoods, and being along or near corridors that are served by proposed transit or sidewalks. All of those items in the staff's report give me a lot of pause with thinking about what we're doing here. And I have, I have had lots of discussions with the neighborhood folks and Mr. Smith, and I, I think that Mr. Smith, if he was able to do the development that he wants to do, I think it would be a really high-quality product. I think it would be really nice. The situation in that space is such that you could have a very nice, you know, townhome situation, condo situation, whatever you're looking there. I have no doubt that he can do that. The problem that we have in this is that we don't have planned residential. And I beat this drum 100 times. We don't have it, and that's what we need. This is a challenged property. If you, it's difficult for Mr. Smith to be able to figure out what he can do with the property because he's got all the water surrounded him. He's got, it's got topography issues. He does have options to think about variances within the low-density residential that I think he could, he could pursue. But the real fault of this is not from any of the parties that are here. It's because we don't have planned residential. The county has planned residential. We had planned residential, and we got rid of it. And I've been on this for years. We need to bring planned residential back. Now, maybe it's not the same planned residential that we had before. Maybe it's better, but we need it, and we need it now. Because what properties exist that haven't been developed that aren't challenged? If it was easy, it already got developed. So anything that's left is hard. And when we have planned development, then the neighbors and the developer can talk, and they can figure out what they want to do, and they can put it in writing, and then we can vote on it. How about we do that? That sounds like a high priority thing that we should be looking at. That's my soapbox on that. I can't support this just because of what's in the staff report, and I have no doubt that Mr. Smith would, would be able to produce something that's really good. But I just can't run into somebody at the grocery store after this who says, with all that in the, about the traffic, why did you vote to make it go into medium density? I just, I can't do it. So I'm going to have to make a motion to deny.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion from other council members. Councilmember Thomas.
Yes. For some of the reasons that Councilman Roberto has already gone over, and I won't belabor them, we've all had this before, but this staff recommendation is basically damning. I mean, you've got seven criteria here, and the staff has found problems and objections with every one of them. Some of them are with traffic. Some of them are environmental. There's no change in, in policy. The criteria are not being met, and I just don't think we can ignore the criteria. And I've said before that some of the things that we're getting out of the planning commission are, as I've said, is are a real stretch as far as meeting criteria. And the criteria are there, and we, you know, I think we're derelict if we ignore them. So I can't support this with this staff recommendation pointing out all these, these, these problems. There's just, I just can't do it. Sorry.
Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you. I guess my question is, knowing all that, then why did planning commission approve it 11 to 1? So I'm, please, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to get applause. I'm asking a legitimate question when we have a staff recommendation that's, because it causes me concern and puts us in, as council, in a very difficult spot when we have staff that says one thing, and we have the planning commission that's supposed to interpret all that, and then they go, based on what we've said, that it doesn't meet any of their criteria. And I have lots of people I know and like on planning commission. So, you know, I'm confused. So they must not have interpreted it the same way staff did. So, but, so that's just an editorial comment because I don't expect anybody to know why planning commission voted the way they, they voted. My question is, when I read, if I look at the zoning code, Mr. Roberto, when you were talking about there are ways to do variances and create a, can a townhouse project be built in RN1 with, is that allowed, and are exceptions allowed to make that happen if it were on special review? I'm not asking the right questions, Ms. Brooks. My, my brain's a little not pulling the right words.
I think you did.
Okay.
In RN1, you cannot do townhouse development. So RN3 is the zone that allows for townhouse development.
But you could do a duplex on review?
You could do a duplex development, RN1 and RN2.
Okay. That's, so, so you could do seven duplexes if you got approval?
Potentially. I haven't calculated that.
Okay. I mean, I'm just saying, if we said you could do seven single-family homes, then you might be able to do 14 duplexes, but not a townhome.
In the current, as it's currently set.
Okay, okay. And that would not violate any of the existing issues with developing the property as a RN1? I mean, I understand you'd have to have review, but, but the environmental concerns, all those kind of things would be taken into account by allowing a duplex as well?
Any type of development that they would want to pursue would need to be reviewed by city's plans review inspection engineering to make sure that it met all requirements.
And, but you could have multiple single-family homes. I believe I heard seven would probably fit, but that's on 15 acres, and we heard that 15 acres isn't usable. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I just have one. I guess, to me, the, the big question mark that I feel like I'm unclear about is- I feel like I'm unclear about is how many units can be built? I mean, just, I know the 72 seems a bit unfair. There's, you know, the water runoff issue. There's the creek. I don't have a clear view of what is possible there. And talking to all the parties, I only hear what Mr. Smith has proposed. And Mr. Smith, do you want to respond to this? You're welcome to come up. I think, yeah.
Your question is, how many units can be built?
Yeah.
The way this zoning code, as I understand it, is you have to submit an entire plan, engineers, architectural, everything. It's extremely expensive. And we're supposed to get the zoning first and then go back and get the plan done. And all this does is allow me to submit a plan. It doesn't rubber stamp anything. And that's the process that I understand.
Okay.
What was another question?
Well, I was just, I'm trying to get a clear answer from someone around how many units can be developed.
I volunteered to limit that to no more than 20 units. In the event we could get more than 20, I committed to the neighbors that we would not build more than 20. So, everybody I've talked to has also, everybody else I've talked to has said that that amount of units would not be consequential to the traffic at the intersection.
Mr. Mullins, do you want to add to that?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Mullins, would you like to add to that?
Yeah. I mean, if you're looking at the number of units can be built, I mean, there's a minimum lot size, you have to have 12,000 square feet for the first three townhomes, and then 3,000 square feet for each additional townhome. That's the dimensional design guidelines in the RN3 zoning. So, if you look at the 1.7, which is what's outside the floodway, that's what you could build without, you know, having to do a no-rise study and lift it, you know, one foot above a 500-year floodplain. That's where I got the 1.7. That would equal 23 townhomes. That does not count the setbacks. It does not count the parking areas. It does not count any buffering or any access, which is why my estimate to you when I spoke earlier was that the most that you could build would be between 10 and 20. But until you really dig into the details, you won't know exactly.
Okay. Mr. Klein, did you want to, in fairness, respond to that question?
Sure do. Thank you very much. We did an evaluation based upon the number of square foot and the acreage that's available, and that they're saying is two to five acres, somewhere around there. And if that's true, then in the existing zone, RN1, that's there now, it can have 21 lots. There's single-family residential. And RN2, it could have 43 lots of single-family residential, and it can also have duplexes. He can't have townhouses till he gets up to the medium density, which is an RN3. And at five acres, he could have 71 lots for townhouses.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ryder.
Yeah. Mr. Howley, I'm going to put you on the spot there, but is that a succinct or correct way to summarize it, that you have to get the zoning and then spend all the money on all the plans and everything to be able to come up with a calculation of the number of units?
That's typically the way.
I think I summarized what Mr. Smith said correctly.
Yeah. That's typically what you would do. The investment to go through the options to find out what can be done before you have the zoning is a large expense to have at that point. And there are a lot of things going on on this site. A lot of them have already been mentioned. I think the ones I have written down is, there's a buffer associated with the floodplain, a no-fill line, most likely a TVA flow adjustment, the irregular shape, the hillside protection. All those things lend into what available space there is to use. But there's also some flexibility if you give and take with some of the rules. And so, to give you, you know, it's two acres or 2.5 acres, that's hard to come up with. My rough estimate was around two usable acres.
Out of the entire 15?
Yes. I'd say half of it is underwater, so that's kind of unbuiltable.
More than half, according to KGIS.
Right. And then there's 60-foot buffer along the Fourth Creek on the backside, or some hillside protection to the, kind of, the east side. And you have, the road is not straight through there, so there's some irregularities as far as, you know, the way you would build in a more squared-off fashion. So, it's kind of hard to give you the answer you're probably looking for. But just because there are so many different things going on this site to take into consideration when you come up with what area is actually usable, and it is depending on what kind of creative site plan someone came up with.
Okay.
Councilwoman Helsley.
Director Brooks, thank you, Vice Mayor. Director Brooks, when this was denied, and I know we talked about this a long time ago, but it was like, the first time it was on the agenda, you all don't take into consideration, like, the 72 units that we kept hearing, that that's all I heard until, I think, yesterday?
So, just to clarify this, the request wasn't denied. It was approved by the Planning Commission.
By staff. I'm sorry, by planning staff.
Staff does make recommendations to Planning Commission, and they don't always follow our recommendation. They take in additional, they take in additional information during the meetings. But I'm not sure if I answered your question.
We kept hearing the number 72. Everything I saw written, 72 townhomes, and everybody I talked to, it was always 72.
And that was based on the total acreage. But as has been noted, there are additional considerations to be, I'm sorry, I'm really tired, considered. But if this was to be approved, it does have to come back. So, it's very similar to how the planned residential zones are considered in the county and were previously considered in the city. So, in order to do townhomes in RN3, it does have to come back for a special use. So, someone has to present a concept plan to the Planning Commission for it to be reviewed and approved prior to it going to city engineering and plans review inspection.
So, but does the number of units affect the fact that planning staff denied it, is my question? Like, we kept hearing this huge number that apparently, I don't know where it came from, but that's all we had.
No, we usually do, like, a back-of-the-envelope calculation, just for information purposes, but it is not, it did not, we were looking, or the staff were looking specifically at the criteria for the plan amendment, not at how many units could be built.
If it was less than 20, which is what we're hearing now, if that was in front of you today, would that still be denied by planning staff?
Again, for rezonings, we're looking at all the uses that are allowed. We're not specifically looking at, okay, are they going to build townhomes, duplexes, single-family homes? Because we don't know at the time of rezoning of what they want to do.
So, because somebody says they're going to do something, does that mean they will? Sorry. I mean, you could sell it. There's a lot of stuff.
There's just a lot of other factors to consider. So, we just try to look at all the uses that could potentially be.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilwoman Singh.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, the number has not been as high as 72 because we're not looking, we're just looking at two and a half acres now. But I'm getting the feeling that the opposition is more against any number of townhomes versus the same number or equal residences of single-family homes, that the problem is the attached housing, more so than that there will be density there.
The problem is going from low-density to medium-density residential. Townhouses, single-family residents, that's really ancillary. Moving to MDR, a medium-density residential area, in this area, that is south of North Shore Drive, creates a completely different environment. It's a transition zone, should have commercial on one side, residential on the other. And so, to inject an MDR into this neighborhood is the objection.
So, if it was, if we did a rezoning to RN2, then by special use, could we do townhomes? Townhomes and?
Not in an RN2. It has to be an RN3. Townhomes are.
How about duplexes in a RN2 with special permission?
Yes.
Would there be an objection to that?
Well, there'd be an objection to going at a higher, to a higher density.
At all. So, it's not just the lower to medium. Even the transition area doesn't feel okay.
The transition area is in an RN3. It's defined within the RN3 zone. And my folks don't want to go to a medium-density zone because of the effect it will have on the neighborhood. Gee, I'd have to, I'd have to talk to my clients about that. I don't think they, I don't know. I'd have to talk to them about it. Oh, I just talked to them. They said no.
Councilwoman Singh, will you please turn your mic right back on real fast?
Just makes me feel that no change is wanted at all.
Well, that's not true at all. That's not true at all. Really, we have worked with Mr. Smith, trying to talk about, how about putting a circular driveway in and putting single-family residential in? How about, we even talked about going to an RN2 because there's a smaller footprint for single-family residential. But to go to a medium-density residential, there's so many factors that you're not even considering. But look at staff report to the commission. None of the conditions that are necessary for a sector plan amendment or a one-year plan amendment are met. None. Zero. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'll just add my last comment, and then we'll vote. Just for me, Mr. Smith, I think if you were to do 10 to 20 units of some type there, I think that's fitting based on everything. I watched the Planning Commission meeting and understood the dialogue there. And with that said, to me, there's too much possibility and too much uncertainty associated with the plan. I get the process by which you have to go get it rezoned, and then before you have the cash outlay of all the expenses and everything. But to me, the target is too fuzzy for me to support the MDR. So, that's my opinion. Any other discussion? There's a, Councilwoman Parker.
No, I'm too tired myself to even ask this, but I will ask really quickly. Just to clarify, and I'm sorry, I know y'all are tired too. Remind me how many single-family homes we anticipate might be able to be built on this two acres? Maybe for Mr. Mullins is a question.
If you're talking about the current zoning, the single-family residential in the RN1 requires a 10,000-square-foot lot. So, the maximum density would be 4.35, 3.56 dwelling units an acre. And so, if you're looking at a two-acre envelope of development, then, you know, you're looking at, you're asking me to do math. It's dangerous in any circumstance, 10, but, yeah. You really couldn't do much more. And I guarantee, if we move forward with RN1 and put duplexes there, everybody behind us would be objecting to it. It's about the type of housing. It's not about the density. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Can I finish my thought?
Yes, please.
Well, just quickly, I asked that question for that very reason, because I think it's important to be able to envision what the outcome might be. And under an RN1, we're talking about a certain number of units, and then by special use, could consider duplexes, increasing the number of residents at that location. And then the RN3, under that plan, what I'm hearing is a similar number of residences under that plan. However, I am sympathetic to the argument of the neighborhood and the planning staff, honestly, that when making a zoning change, you have to consider all uses. I just wish we would do that consistently in all neighborhoods. And so, that's one issue that gives me pause.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Yeah. I think that Councilmember Roberto made a lot of really valid points. The fact that the Planning Commission staff recommended denial. And when, I think what also needs to be pointed out for anyone that didn't look at it, is the aerial maps in KGIS. The 15 acres that are in the maps that we see don't quite, though they show a lot of water too, don't quite convey what I see when I look at the aerial in KGIS. It's literally, it's the lake. We're being asked to rezone the lake. Well, Mr. Smith, you're shaking your head yes at me. And I'm just like, we're being asked to rezone the lake. And so, if I owned a postage stamp of land, apparently Siri has taken over the iPad, if I had a postage stamp of lot, she wants to be part of the conversation, next to the lake, much smaller than yours, right? Let's say I owned a one acre abutting a lake, but I happen to own underneath the lake because six months out of the year, it's not the lake, it's the sides of the creek and the floodplain. I just think that's a little odd to rezone to get higher density based on the bed of the creek. We're just going to disagree. So, it's fine. But I'm just like, wow, it's the lake. It's the lake. So, anyway, I'm going to be supporting the motion on the floor.
Does everybody remember the motion on the floor? The motion on the floor in a second is to deny the approval. Any questions or discussion before we vote? All those in favor of the denial, please say aye. Any opposed to the denial? Okay. Eight to one. One abstention. Okay. Counsel, now we're moving on to public forum. We have three speakers signed up to speak. Nafis Chaudry is number one. Kim Wilson Owen is number two, and Tom Ruggles is number three. Folks, if you could please keep your volume down as we leave. We're just trying to go home ourselves. Mr. Chaudry, you have five minutes to address counsel.
So, I come here with a topic today that will either interest you deeply or you'll not care at all. I guarantee you, none of you, by the time I'm done with it in the next five minutes, will be neutral in the middle. It happens in a distant land, far away from the city of Knoxville, but it's somehow connected yet to the community of humanity and the city here as well. Give you a clue by a code by Martin Luther King Jr., injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Honorable members of the city council, esteemed guests, and fellow community members, my name is Nafis Chaudry. I naturalize as a citizen born in Bangladesh and a resident of Knoxville City. And I'm here today representing the Bangladeshi community of Knoxville. I stand before you to bring to light the grave human rights violations occurring in Bangladesh under its current autocratic government led by Bangladesh Awami League, commonly known as BAL. Overview of past atrocities. The history of human rights violations in Bangladesh under the current government is long and troubling. Since the Bangladesh Border Guard BGB headquarters in Dhaka, tragedy since in 2009, where 74 people, including 57 army officers, were brutally murdered, the regime has continued its violent suppression of dissent. Recent student massacre and government oppression. In recent weeks, the situation of Bangladesh has deteriorated to an unprecedented level. The peaceful quota reform movement initiated by students demanding fair changes to the public sector recruitment discriminatory quota system of reserving 56% of jobs for quota qualifiers has been met with heinous and brutal repression. Reports from international media, including BBC and Al Jazeera, highlight the excessive use of force by police and ruling party activists, who have attacked unarmed protesters with rubber bullets, live bullets, tear gas, and batons, causing 700-plus unofficial, of which 180 confirmed by AP casualties, along with thousands of injured, many of them resulting in life-threatening serious condition. Universities have been raided, and students have been dragged out of their dormitories and beaten. International community has not remained silent. Several U.S. House representatives have condemned the situation in their tweets, and the U.S. State Department has issued a level four travel advisory for Bangladesh, citing the severe risks. The U.S. Embassy in Dhaka has released urgent notices warning of the volatile environment. Nobel laureate Professor Mohamed Yunus, our respected global figure, has issued a statement condemning these human rights abuses. Also, Amnesty International criticized role of Bangladesh Army, historically participant of the UN peacekeeping mission, now involved in killing of unarmed protesters using UN insignia APCs and trucks. Appeals for intervention and support. Honorable counsel members, these violations by government of Bangladesh demand immediate intervention. We Bangladeshi community in Knoxville implore you to take our plea to the appropriate authorities at state and federal levels. We request you to engage with your House representatives to escalate this issue to the highest to escalate this issue to the highest levels of the government and international bodies. The time to act is now. The cries of the oppressed in Bangladesh must not go unhard. We call for, number one, international pressure, diplomatic efforts to press the Bangladeshi government to cease its violent suppression of dissent and to step down from power to allow for free and fair elections. Two, sanctions and accountability. Targeted sanctions against those responsible for these human rights abuses and mechanisms to hold them accountable. Three, support for civil society. Aid and support for Bangladesh's civil society organizations fighting for discrimination, for democracy and human rights. Also advocate to take every necessary measure to ban student politics in educational institutions. In closing, let us remember that fight for humanity rights and, human rights and democracy is a shared global responsibility. By standing with the oppressed people of Bangladesh, we affirm our commitment to these universal values. As Martin Luther King Jr. famously said, as I mentioned earlier at the opening, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We thank you again for your attention, and we thank you also in anticipation of your willingness to act on behalf of those who cannot raise their voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Wilson Owen is next. Ms. Owen, you have up to five minutes to address council. If you will state your name and address for the record.
I am Kim Wilson Owen, and I am in District 6, 37914. I had to attempt to learn about this very quickly. Thank goodness I learned so much more about it tonight during these discussions. This was quite a, quite a night. So based on those discussions, I may jump around a bit in my notes. I'm here in support of Councilor Parker's proposed ordinance, especially district-only city council elections, which I recognize Councilor Parker is willing to work with the council on that. When I moved home to Knoxville in 2020 and walked to support my District 6 candidate in my next election, I was stumped and dismayed to find that regardless of the feelings and votes of the people in District 6, the entire city, very few of whom have put the time in in the District 6 community, had the final say. I can't think of a worse idea than making taxpayers and voters and citizens of Knoxville districts subject to the tyranny of the majority. Does West Knoxville want East Knoxville or Lonsdale or Mechanicsville? Choosing who represents them, so why? Would this council entertain the idea that voters living in one district could overrule the choice of representation in another district? And to underline my remark about what West Knoxville wants and doesn't want, they're not here listening to this public forum right now to hear their other fellow students, the citizens' concerns. They're about their concerns. It's natural that each of us should be about the concerns in our community. So, sorry. We heard the idea that city council, with at-large elections for all city council positions, creates accountability for the citizens in the city council. You are already accountable to citizens. With district-only elections, the council is more accountable to the city, thanks to the increased opportunity for dissent. And it is your job to have fully informed discussions and work out differences to find solutions. You are already accountable. District-only elections would increase that. I also want to point out that letting the city vote on District 6 has not moved any needle of positive outcome for District 6 residents that I know of. I think I have on good information, since I've been away for some years. And certainly what I've come back to tells me citywide voting on District 6 is not helpful for District 6. I wonder too, as I learned tonight, I wonder too, if we consider that our current system is working when we have only just five years ago elected our first black at-large candidate? Is that what we consider working? Have our minds really changed? Mr. Smith mentioned the guardrails, the guardrails that come from having this majority-white city vote on all districts' representation. Those guardrails are the district with the highest turnout, affluent white voters. I would like to challenge our, our council, as I have been attempting to do myself, to think through what the meaning is of institutional racism. It means that in spite of the very best heartfelt intentions of those who participate, the, the outcomes are inevitably ist, racist, sexist, harmful. They are institutionalized. Genderism and sexism and racism cause bad outcomes, regardless of the good intentions of the people who participate. I was, I am, I apologize, I was chuckling to myself as we were calling this a diverse city council. So, my time is almost up. I thank you all for the discussion tonight. I encourage free and fair elections that stay in the districts affected. And I ask that you all consider the idea of institutionalized racism and the outcomes for District 6 and for all minorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Ruggles. I think he's left. Council, unless you all want to start a brainstorm, this meeting is adjourned.